All right, good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you for attending this special meeting of the Arcata City Council. Tonight, our goal is to review any topics related to the city's updated general plan and Gateway Area Plan and Code where a council member has questions or would like to request changes. It is not our intention to adopt these plans tonight, but it is our goal to provide direction to staff on changes we would like to see before we consider adoption on July 17th. All right, so typically during special meetings, we take public comment only once at the beginning of the meeting and only for items that are on the agenda. Because we have two council members that need to recuse themselves for the Gateway Area Plan items, I'm going to take public comment now for the first item on the agenda, which is the Gateway Area Plan, the Gateway Form-Based Code, and the final Environmental Impact Report. I will open in public comment again before Item B, the General Plan, when our colleagues can join us and ensure that they also hear the public comments for the overall general plan. And then I'll open it a third time specifically for items on the potential grant application. So if you're interested in providing public comment on all items Gateway and the EIR, this is your chance. Please line up at the podium or raise your Zoom hand now. We will take in-person comments first and then move to Zoom. We are not going to go back and forth, so if you have comments for the Gateway, please line up. Lots of chances for public comment tonight. If you're wanting to talk, please line up so I can get an idea of how many people are. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. As you may know, CRTP's members and supporters include more than 700 local individuals, many of them Arcata residents, as well as a number of local nonprofit organizations. CRTP strongly supports the Gateway Plan and zoning code. You've heard me talk about the plan many times over the last few years, so, you know, I won't belabor it tonight, but I just want to remind you that the Gateway Plan started out, when it first drafted back in 2021, as the most bike, pedestrian, and transit-friendly land use plan yet proposed for our region, and it really has only gotten stronger since then. By allowing and encouraging higher density development, the Gateway Plan also allows and encourages the kind of neighborhood that research shows is necessary for walkability, bikeability, and higher transit ridership. And through planning for car light and even car-free living through parking reforms, street safety improvements, building designs, and more, the Gateway Plan and its zoning code foster more affordable, equitable, healthy, safe, and environmentally friendly housing. It's been a long and painstaking process to get to this point. Over the past several years, the plan and the code have been picked apart, studied, reviewed, amended in countless public meetings, primarily by the Planning Commission, but also by other committees, agencies, and community organizations, and in meetings with this council as well. The Planning Commission, as you know, completed its review recently and recommended approval. So I think any suggestion that the process has been rushed or that the documents haven't been thoroughly vetted and reviewed is kind of out of touch with reality. The Gateway Plan and its zoning code are ready for your approval, and we just ask in the strongest possible terms that you move to approve them at the earliest opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cody Freitas. As a local member of the Operating Engineers Local Three, as a local resident, and as a delegate to our local Building Trades and Construction Council of Humboldt-Bellard Counties, I wanted to come out and express my members' support, that is 14 affiliated unions and their craft and their members' support for the Gateway Area Plan, the Gateway Code, and the program EIR. The Gateway Area Plan embodies what this community relies on as protecting our public areas and providing housing to people who need access to housing. It will lead to remediation and infilling and the progress and betterment of our area. It will lead to local projects for hopefully local workers to take part in and help to build their own community. And I hope to see this council support on July 17th, the Gateway, as recommended by staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gregory Taggart. I'll bring up again the Fire District because this is one of the most critical issues. You've received a letter from them, but it's beyond just that letter. You had August 4th, 2022, a presentation basically said, "Do not even think about coming up with a height," which you did two weeks later, unfortunately, at seven stories. You had January 10th, where they gave another presentation and said, basically, "Do not build anything over three stories." Where we cannot handle anything at this time. We've already had, almost lost, Soro Place from two oven fires. And so I'm just like curious, what is going on here? You have the first spenders that basically, you know, are putting their lives on the line, and they're basically asking you to be in a partnership with them, and you're basically not treating them well at all. They're basically saying, "Look, we're going to lose the public, we're going to lose our own lives if you go ahead and do this." And so you're doing a study right now, and I'm just really totally confused about this from the standpoint, you're not even going to wait till that is done to make a decision? I mean, what kind of leadership is that, that the university is spending money, the city is spending money, and the city council thinks that, "Oh, we can just go ahead and make a decision on this?" So that is legally just unbelievable from the standpoint of the liability there, if anything were to go wrong from the standpoint of lives lost in the building, and from the standpoint of the decision-makers, I think you're putting yourself on a limb by doing this. So let's like do it the right way, not the way that just rushes this through. And I'll say the Planning Commission didn't do you any favors from the standpoint of spending a total of 15 minutes even addressing this, and every single person that was there that evening brought up the Fire District, they read, the letter was written out at that time, and we didn't get an answer. We got kind of this vague, "Well, you know, we're collaborating on the width of the road, or the stairways are going to be a little bit wider." That's not the question at all. It's what happens when you have smoke and a fire, and you need to get in there, and you need people to address the fire. No one has addressed that at all in this whole process from the standpoint. The only ones that addressed it is the Fire District, and they basically said, "Don't do it." So I'm just like completely upset about this from the standpoint of, this is not how responsible government works, and I hope that you rise to the occasion and correct this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Noah Levy. I am an Arcata City resident. I am here just to speak or to express my fervent support and gratitude to the City of Arcata for having developed the Gateway Area Plan and the Gateway Zoning and the EIR associated it. I'm quite familiar with these documents. I've attended numerous meetings over the past four years or so, couple of walking tours with Director Loyah. I'm speaking for myself, but my experience is informed by the fact that I've been on the Humboldt County Planning Commission for 10 years, so I really do understand how difficult it is to craft solutions that can both create more housing, more affordable housing, can integrate business districts with housing, and allow for carbon-friendly transit solutions to start to evolve, all at the same time. And I will say that I, and I think many of us who are not part of the City of Arcata, look to the Gateway Plan as a real model of planning success. It has made lots of changes, it has taken a tremendous amount of citizen input, but I feel like the plan that you've arrived at, that the Planning Commission has now recommended, is a really, really, really strong plan that accomplishes all those things and indeed, I think, will be looked to as a model by the rest of the county, by other municipalities, about how we develop our inner, our city centers. So I hope that you will not take too long to approve this plan as it has been drafted, and let us start to build it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Lulu Michelson, and I am a renter in Arcata, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, so thank you for this. Professionally, I've also worked extensively on housing policy, both in government and as an advocate, and I want to express my strong support for this version of the Gateway Area Plan that has come to you and was passed by the Planning Commission. The density included in this plan is climate-friendly, it helps us to have more walkable and transit-rich neighborhoods, and it also prevents sprawl. So we in Humboldt love our wild and farmlands, and the density that the Gateway Area Plan allows will help make sure that our city centers grow and we don't sprawl out into these beautiful open spaces that make this place so special. I want to celebrate how density, including how the four-to-seven-story buildings in the plan, are critical to Arcata's stated value of inclusion. So right now, Arcata is one of the most desirable communities in Humboldt County. People want to live here. Yet in our current housing crisis, so many struggle to find a safe and affordable option in Arcata. So in my work advising local nonprofits, I have connected with many of these residents. So I've heard from a nurse who's commuting two hours every day to work in Arcata and is struggling with high grass prices. I've heard from older adults who want to downsize from a home that is too large to manage for them, but they can't like find affordable one-bedroom options. And then there's my personal experience. As a renter, I recently found out that my landlord will be moving a family member into my house. I'm on the rental hunt right now, and there's a really good chance that I won't be able to stay in Arcata because the options are really limited and they're not affordable to me. Even in the three years that I've lived in my current unit, the prices have gone up so quickly that I may have to move out of this community. So it's a personal and professional issue, and so I just want to be really direct. Limiting building heights in the Gateway Area Plan is a form of exclusion. It means less homes and less people who get to enjoy the benefits of this community. So the restrictive heights setbacks and zoning guidelines increase building costs and also reduce affordability. So the plan as it stands is really thoughtful about finding that right balance, and so I just want to really state my strong support for the way it looks right now. I think it will allow the type of affordable housing and growth that this community needs to be inclusive and to really allow for a future where the stated values of Arcata can come to life. So thank you for that opportunity to share.
Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, new microphone. Good evening, Mayor Matthews and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I've watched most of the Planning Commission meetings on the Gateway Plan and the General Plan update. I've watched most of your meetings and the joint study sessions, and I've read most of the documents, and I'm here to encourage you to vote for it, move it along. This is a great plan. I want to tell you, as someone who served on the General Plan Task Force from 1997 to 2000, then I served on the Planning Commission, and then I was on the city council when we passed General Plan 2020, this is exactly what we would all be hoping would happen in the next General Plan update. You have taken the ideas and you have moved them forward, and by creating the densities that you have, you will achieve one of the main goals of our previous General Plan and our current General Plan, which is to preserve our open space, our natural resources, and our working agricultural lands. And we all know how important these will become as things change in our climate. These will even have more, be more vitally important. So I say yes to getting rid of parking mandates and narrowing streets. I say yes to more public transit and more sidewalks and bike lanes. And in particular, as someone who focuses on creation of affordable housing, I want to say, I think this is a really great plan, and this is important because, you know, at the state level, we're going to be facing huge funding challenges for affordable housing and first-time homebuyer programs and all of that. So what we can do at the local level is pass programs and policies like you have in this plan, and that will help lead to creation of affordable housing. And, you know, as someone who spoke to you several months ago about concerns about how the state density bonus program, the Community Benefits Plan, and inclusionary zoning, I was concerned that there were contradictions. I have read this over three times, your new documents. I think they work fairly well. I said, excuse me, very well. And as a former developer, I can tell you, this is a readable document that you can read through and understand. I look forward to the inclusionary zoning, the new inclusionary zoning threshold of 15 units being codified in the zoning code, and I wasn't the only one looking for that section there, so I'm glad to hear that that will be coming along. I want to thank the council for that. You took a very progressive stand, and it will lead to the creation of more affordable housing. And I wish that just creating more housing would bring prices down. It may stall prices out, but it's probably not going to bring them down, so we need these progressive policies to house the kind of people that Lulu was talking about, the service workers, and students, and low-income seniors in our community who are paying way too much for housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. You know where I stand. I support the Gateway Area Plan. I have from the beginning, but it is still incomplete, still needs improvement, and you, I believe, have incomplete documents before you. I've sent you a long email earlier today. I know you're not going to pass things tonight. It's bullet pointed, and I'm sure you'll get to it. The, I'll mention just a small number of specific items for discussion this evening. First is protection of the Linear Park and the proposed window from L Street Corridor. An actual planning for this. There is in the Gateway Code protection for privately-owned public access spaces. That same protection does not apply to linear parks in the Gateway Code. It would be a very simple matter to at least start with that. It doesn't protect the Linear Park from solar shading, but it does protect it in other ways. That's a fairly easy thing to do. Second on large items is the notion of ministerial review in the Gateway Area Plan. I strongly disagree with what's in there now, and I want to point out that the version of ministerial review that was shown to the Planning Commission was changed. They reviewed it on April 23rd in the May 9 edition. It changed before that. Planning Commission had jurisdiction over 40 feet height. It was changed to 47 feet. There was no discussion about this, and it was not in the track changes. My request of the council is to ask the Community Development Director why this change was made. Before, it was unclear. A change needed to be made, but with discussion, not arbitrarily from zoning administrator have jurisdiction over three stories to zoning administration having jurisdiction over four stories, or, excuse me, up to four stories. On smaller items, I believe the Environmental Impact Report has issues. It has numerous errors of fact. I feel it's vulnerable to a potential lawsuit if someone were to attack it. It also states that requires central air conditioning as mitigation for traffic noise. That's horrible. Very small item, indoor bike storage, quick and easy to correct, and increased requirement for short-term bike parking. It is a mystery to me why these have not been solved prior to this. I look forward to your discussion tonight, and I thank you for your work.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank you guys for being our voice in the community and working through all of this information and trying to make sense of it and make it as good as we can. Thanks to staff for your efforts. I know it's a lot of work trying to keep up with all this, and I know you're doing the best you can. I would encourage the council to take the time that we still have with what you've presented tonight for this meeting format, and really make sure that you voice to staff changes that you want to have made that are important, some more important than others, some not such a big deal in my opinion. Greg mentioned the Fire District's concerns, and I have watched that, and from the community standpoint, it appears that the message we're getting back is a little bit mousy on what they're really asking for and what you're saying is happening. I know, you know, everybody's working hard to try to figure out how to make that work well, if we ever do get tall buildings built locally, but I think something written that directly uses their language so that they know you're serious about their intent versus your intent, rather than some watered-down version and some offshoot language that doesn't really respect what they've written. That's what we saw at the Planning Commission meeting that was, I thought, inexcusable. Let's see, the, I've noticed that letters from the community are turning up missing. I had a letter that I wrote about the L Street Linear Park and protection for parks and all that sort of stuff, and Mayor Matthews reached out. We spoke about it, and she knows where I stand with that. I think there needs to be something more firm written in respects to August 22nd, when they announced what their hopes were for that segment of town, to make that the jewel of that area. If we do end up with a bunch of growth, a bus situation, it'd certainly be great to have that protected as a nice people space. Be a parkway through that whole area would help developers with their needs of what, you know, open spaces they would need to require because you'd already have city-owned property there. But I'm hoping to hear something about that from them. I have a bunch of other notes, but that's probably the two biggest things. Land use policy, we can talk about that under the next segment and probably fit with the specification of staying on topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Martha Jane, and I'll just write, I'll read what I have written. "I start with little Jane Jacobs from Death and Life, the Great American City. We expect too much of new buildings and too little of ourselves. I've come to speak up for protecting the existing Rails with Trail Corridor, L Street Park, as it crosses Gateway. The city went to some effort 10 years ago to provide this multi-use path, and it's worked well. It will one day connect to the Great Redwood Trail, and it's becoming a community-supported place, the L Street Linear Park. I think any way these Gateway documents can reinforce and build upon it, it should happen now. Also, I am coming to speak about the Gateway as a not-great-public process. This process has been rich on meetings and miserly on options and listening." I'm not talking about you all, but at the meetings I've gone to, it doesn't seem like there's been much reflection on it, the things that have been said. "I think there should have been a community-based agreement on the existing assets of this area, from the industry, to the arts, to the families, to the gentle Bay Edge, where so much life happens. We should have discussed infill versus development, increasing density versus high density, and what kinds of housing really could be built. I feel the Gateway hatch nearly full-grown from a lonely COVID nursery. From the first public iteration of the zoning plan in December 2021, the people's summary on page one brazenly spoke for us, 'the people,' before we had even been included. In a video that I called shock and awe at the time, Rob Homeland proposed a plan five years in the making. There were density studies, one-way couplets, key opportunity sites, FARs, eight-story buildings, places called the Gateway Barrel District. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? An intricate game board that had been engineered where industrial uses were scent-packing, and developers traded chips with the city for streamlined development that would, of course, be well-designed. My impression is not, my impression is most people were overwhelmed by the 110-page Gateway document. You can have a million meetings, but if a plan is hatched five years in the making, and there are FARs and RHNA's, the people are not going to feel that they are able to participate. My impression also was city staff felt they needed to show the state that Arcata could keep providing the four categories of housing per Government Code 65584. These things have contributed to a flawed public process. I just felt it was important to say that. It hasn't been one that's been easy for just folks to join in on, so there's a false impression about a lot of things. People aren't necessarily being nimby's if they care about their town." So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello to council. Thank you for all your dedication, all to staff, and all that's been going on here. Mine, of course, will speak a little bit to the Linear Park. It's kind of what's been my thing, you know? And it's specifically some policies that I think are conflicting with, you know, the future of this, and I recommend to council to exclude the L Street Rails with Trails Corridor from action granted by Barrel District Master Plan, page 15 of the Gateway Form-Based Codes from May 14, 2024, as states as follows, foresee circulation. The city may approve a master plan circulation system that deviates from the Gateway Area Plan's Figure Eight, proposed vehicle circulation, and Figure Nine, proposed active transportation circulation. Upon finding deviations, allow for superior circulation consistent with Gateway Plan area goals. This language allows for the potential removal of the L Street Rails with Trails paths south of 7th Street, possibly A Street. The language in conjunction with circulation-mobility element CM5E7, page 264, enables the developer to request to remove the L Street Rails with Trails pathway from the L Street Corridor. In general, retain, in CM5E7, in general, retain the current total linear feet of a Class 1 trails within the city, even if the current facilities must be realigned or relocated to other routes. And this language definitely has some potential. You know, and at this juncture, I just recommend that the no-net-loss Class 1 trail, the first paragraph, should be separated from the second paragraph of this policy, and that is, the policy offers the acknowledgement that the trails throughout Arcata, that, and that they should be preserved, and linear feet of the trail should not- And this language definitely has some potential. You know, and at this juncture, I just recommend that the no-net-loss Class 1 trail, the first paragraph, should be separated from the second paragraph of this policy. And that is, the policy offers the acknowledgement that the trails throughout Arcata, that, and that they should be preserved, and linear feet of the trail should not be contingent upon the whims of the developer. It should be given, given if the linear feet of a trail is removed for any reason, not just because of development. And that second part of that paragraph, which I think should be a separate policy if not one, is, "In limited circumstances, the city shall retain the discretion to allow the applicant to demonstrate removal, and relocation of a Class 1 Trail section would improve active transportation and access to connectivity." This definitely, like I've said before, speaks directly to the removal of the L Street Rails with Trails Corridor, and doing so, specifically in this case, the L Street Path, would counter the promise of staff during the discussion of the two-way couplet, that the L Street Pathway would not be removed from the L Street Rails with Trails Corridor. Even with the L Street Couplet off the table, we face the reality, the L Street Path could be removed. You know, finally, I would request that you designate the L Street Rails with Trails Corridor as a Linear Park from Alliance Road to Samoa Boulevard, preserving the open spaces north of 11th Street and south of 7th Street, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Melody Meyer, and I just wanted to tell you all today that I really support the Gateway Plan. I think it's, looks really good after all of these long hours of development. And I specifically wanted to talk about how excited I am that increasing the supply of housing is going to make it more affordable for more diverse people to live in this beautiful community. I'm Native American, and I know that Native Americans have high rates of homelessness and struggle to afford places to live. There's high rates of poverty, and so it would be really meaningful for me to see more opportunities for people to be able to live here and just continue to make this community that we all love even stronger. And I think the Gateway Plan has done a great job of doing development in a smart way that's good for our environment. I really love being able to live in a community where I can walk to the park, but also walk to a grocery store, and so this plan is going to make that possible for so many people, and I'm really happy to see that. I just really support having more streamlined housing guidelines and making it more affordable for housing to be built so that it's affordable for people to live in. And so I really appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into this, and I really hope that you choose to approve it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lori Breckler. I've lived most of my adult years in Humboldt County and have valued Arcata specifically because we're small, we're a community, and it still feels that way. I think we've got to be very careful as we move this train forward, that we don't over-densify, that traffic flow is still doable, that Alliance doesn't become another, you know, 101B. Very concerned about that. In the overall vision about beauty and therapy for our people, I would like it mandated that our creek is daylighted. If you've ever been lucky enough to be down at San Luis Obispo, you're here in the middle of the city, and you get to walk along this natural, it goes right through the city, their natural stream, and it is delightful. Kids are blowing bubbles. I mean, it is amazing, and we would be, do a detriment to keep it under the cement, keep it hidden, because you wouldn't believe what it could add to the whole aesthetic of this area. I'd like to also see mandated that we only plant native plants. I don't know if we've got enough water for all this growth. We'll see in the years to come. But native plants that could educate the whole populace, our tourists, our visitors. Let's show some future vision. Let's create some beauty within the blight that a lot of the properties are in the whole area there. I hope you take this really seriously because it could make a huge difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Patricia Cumbianica. So I have a few, I still have a few concerns with this plan. I think there's some, a few aspects that haven't been fully addressed properly. One is, I think we really should have established where a location of the wastewater treatment plant is going to be going in the future, when or if we have to relocate it. It's looking like we probably have to relocate it at some point. And also addressing its capacity with adding this many units that we're hoping that the goal is for. That's one of my concerns. Another concern is that we have, I don't think we've fully addressed the concerns of the fire, Arcata Fire District. It would be really nice to have those, that concrete, like, just really, really addressed before we moved on. The third one is, I think the solar shading protection to existing neighborhoods has been watered down within the Gateway and without the, you know, with the rest of the city, too. We contribute a lot with our solar panels, back, put back into the grid. It'd be nice if we, I mean, we're trying to get a little bit more independent on our energy, you know, energy, we're trying to get more energy independent, and this would be a great way if we could spread that around to different things. Back to the Class 1 trail, and I'll start on this. I might get morbid with, when we get to the general plan, but the CM5E-7, I think, is very vague and extremely general. Ironically, it starts out in general, that retain the current total linear feet of Class 1 trails within the city, even if currently facilities must be realigned or relocated to other routes. I really firmly believe that any Class 1 trail, or any trail to that matter, within the city should not be moved. I don't think moving what is in this policy called an active transportation is, that it should be moved for a road. I think that mobility doesn't make sense. I think, well, active transportation is human-powered mobility. So, and the petition, there was 1,200 people that said, "We support the existing L Street Bicycle Petition Pathway to be officially designated as a Linear Park from Alliance Road to Samoa Boulevard, Boulevard, the full monti," and that this Linear Park be preserved and enhanced as a green space for recreation, play, and community. And I think we should really, really respect the wishes of our community.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. Glenn Colwell, former Arcata renter, current homeowner in the Sunset Neighborhood. I support the Gateway Plan, primarily the willing buyer, willing seller scenario where older legacy industrial parcels are rezoned for housing, but I still have concerns and hope there's still a willingness to further refine the plan. Please include as a priority daylighting of creeks, as others have mentioned, could add a lot to the city. Please include the L Street Linear Park. Your constituents want it. I was here at the meeting when council direction was provided to staff to include this, curious that it's not been included. Please include upgrades to the K Street Alliance, street to slow traffic, build wounders, add wider bike lanes. Please be cautious about solar shading. Please be cautious about allowing development without parking minimums. Arcata residents have cars. Developers don't seem receptive, essentially saying that they won't build projects without parking because their tenants don't like it, because their tenants have cars. Our streets are already impacted by very dense street parking. I wish the dominant paradigm were different, but it's not. It doesn't seem that new students or residents coming to Arcata are arriving without cars. Perhaps in the next decades, people will be driving smaller cars or EVs, very likely, but it's hard to imagine that the majority of Arcata residents will be carless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. I brought three props, but I'm going to put the earth flag down, but I bring it here, still in hopes that we can have the one up there brought down here to the people's podium. I'm in the middle of moving out of the Gateway District. I've lived there for five and a half years in a flat, a three-bedroom, one-bath flat that had different people coming in and out, and now I got to clean up everybody's mess. But I'm also a car-free Arcaden. I gave my car away a few weeks ago, and I hadn't been using it for over a year. And I've been involved in the Gateway Plan from the very, very beginning, and I just want to say what Martha Jane had to say. Please listen again to what Martha Jane had to say. It's very important, very important. What's happening in Arcata is that we are doing fun, colorful, two-dimensional concepts when we think about the future and the density and the infill and the livability of our town. We need to have safe, sane, and affordable housing, safe, sane, and affordable housing. We need walkability. We need shuttles for people like me who can't climb the hill up to Redwood Park to see that $800,000 new playground. I had to get a ride up there. We need to be really thoughtful about the future, which cannot be like we're living now. We have major behavior change on how we have to live together for the future. So Bucky Fuller thinks differently, and if you knew about Buckminster Fuller, I think he had some really great ideas of how to be different. But I also think that when we look to the future, we think kind of convoluted sometimes and, you know, depend on this high-tech and, you know, this progress and this whole concepts. And I think stepping back and thinking about the elements, you know, instead of saying a pledge of allegiance sometimes, maybe it would be really nice if we talked about the air and the water and the earth and the fire, those four elements of life. And when we're talking about something like the Gateway Plan, I say three stories with a functional rooftop. You can be very creative, and you also really, really need to make sure it's not just a place to put your head down at night. It has to be thrivable. It has to be livable. It's beyond just walkable and bikable and pretty and this and that. It has to be a place where community thrives.
Thank you.
All right, last opportunity for in-person comments on the Gateway Area Plan. Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right. Let's go to Zoom. Yes, until the next meeting. All right, our first speaker is Anthony. Go ahead, Anthony.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for doing the work that you do and the opportunity to speak. I still have concerns about the Gateway Area Plan and the idea of population density in Arcata because I believe that it's going to create a situation where a lot of money is leaving the area, and I want to encourage the decision-makers to consider that we're in a representative democracy and that we should be listening to the community, including the Fire Department, and making sure that these, these new building developments are actually safe for the people who live there and not just listening to the stakeholders and building, you know, oriented folks who've come here tonight, but the people who've been coming for the past few years to talk about things like the Linear Park and the culture of Arcata and the values of Arcata. And I think that it's really important that you guys recognize the sort of slippery slope that we're on when it comes to working with, you know, groups like the Turner Housing and Innovation Labs, which are really representing corporate interests and not at all having anything to do with the actual people of Arcata. And so, you know, I really just think it's important that we be mindful about some of the problems and contradictory things that have been brought up in the plan, and while I respect the amount of work that is being handled on your part and the staff and the Planning Commission, I do want to note, as many have, that there are a lot of irregularities and things that seem to be not lining up, idiosyncrasies about how the plan is being managed and handled and moved forward, and I do think it's premature to approve it because of all of these unanswered questions. And just quite frankly, it's been hard to see the frustration on the public who's been commenting at these meetings over the years, as a lot of our questions and concerns are still not being met. I think that Christopher Dart mentioned in an Ollie presentation, anything above five stories cannot be affordable because of the laws and the costs of building, and I believe the Fire Department has said very clearly that they cannot protect anybody in anything above four stories. I know San Luis Obispo with their Cal Poly was able to set a five-story maximum, and I think Arcata should be able to set a four-story maximum.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, it looks like our last online speaker is Ben. Go ahead, Ben.
Hi there. I'm, my name's Ben Selman. I'm a renter here in Arcata. I'm actually currently in the process of trying to find a new rental, which is a difficult process, as I'm sure everybody who is involved here is aware. There's a tremendous housing shortage in Arcata, and for this community to stay vibrant and be able to be a home for all of the people who want to live here, we have to build more housing. It's just a simple fact of what's happening here, and I am really hoping that Arcata stays a, you know, cute, small town and doesn't sprawl out into our agricultural land, into our forests, into our wetlands, and so the only option left to us is to densify, and I really hope that the City Council will approve the Gateway Plan so that we're able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, that's all for our online public comment.
All right, and again, thank you all for coming out and giving your comments. Really appreciate them. And so we've got a lot of discussion to have on the Gateway Area Plan, so the way I'd like to see this go, so we can make sure by the time our other colleagues get here, that we've got a comprehensive list of all the things that we want to discuss, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Community Development Director Loya for a staff report, and then, one by one, I just want to list all of the things that we'd like to talk about without discussion, just so we can get them all out there, and then, one by one, we'll tackle them and discuss them. Is that okay with everybody? All right, Mr. Loya?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Before I get started, I do want to introduce the team. Obviously, we have Karen Deemer, our esteemed city manager. We also have our legal representation, Doug White's here tonight, myself, David Loya, Jennifer Dart, and Vanessa Blodgett, who's working for Plan West. We're also joined online with folks from GHD, Charles and Kristen, who were involved in drafting the EIR. So we wanted to be able to provide you resources to all the different staff that were involved in this to, to help support staff report tonight. I am going to try and get through the material that we have here fairly quickly and leave the balance of the time for your discussion. For this first part, I'm focusing on the topics in your staff report, the EIR, the Gateway Area Plan, an element of the general plan, and the Gateway Code. And I just want to talk briefly about the approval process, the Environmental Quality Act process, the EIR that we're doing. I want to talk a little bit about version management and then seek your direction for issues. So just going through the approval process, high-level overview, tonight, we've got the three of you who are looking at the EIR, the resolutions for that, and the Gateway Area Plan resolution, and then there's also the Gateway Code ordinance available for you tonight. The underlying documents that those are referencing are online. Their, the links are in the staff report, but I did not include them and attached them to the packet. And so we'll talk a little bit about the, those in the version control section, but basically, these are the documents that we're hoping that you will, you know, be either modifying and adopting or adopting as-is. And the intent is that for tonight, for this topic, that you continue this item to July 17th, date certain, when you 17th, date certain, when you can take them up again. This is a formally noticed public hearing, and so that continuance is important so that we don't have to re-notice a public hearing. Also tonight, we'll be joined by Councilmember Stillman, Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Stillman, excuse me, and Councilmember Atkins Salazar to discuss the balance of the general plan. And similarly, the resolution is in there for adoption, the general plan is actually the one that's referenced online. And that one, you actually do not need to continue because we will take this up again on June 5th. It was a separately noticed meeting for June 5th to consider the general plan. As a side note, it was also noticed that June 5th would take up the Gateway Area Plan, but we will not have a quorum for that meeting for that item. So that's why it's important to continue the Gateway Plan and the EIR to the 17th at this meeting. On June 5th, after your discussions, second discussion about general plan, and that time will be mostly to consider any questions that the council has or, you know, additional public comment, we'll ask you to continue that hearing item to July 17th. Continuing with the approval process, on July 17th, we'll anticipate the three of you, again, taking up the issues you're taking up tonight individually and adopting those resolutions and introducing the Gateway ordinance. And then we'll have a second item where we'll take a look at the general plan with the full council, and you'll be able to take action on that as well. The ordinance that was introduced on the 17th will have to be adopted on August 7th, and that'll be on consent. And again, the three of you will have to take action on that independently because it involves the Gateway. And so, that's sort of the outline for the approval process. Obviously, if your discussions lead to the need for additional special meetings between now and then, or, you know, other modifications to this, we will roll with those punches as they come. Any quick questions about the approval process before going on to CEQA? Okay, seeing none. Oh, and lastly, I think we've all said this in different ways, but we are anticipating formal direction from you tonight for modifications that you feel are necessary so that we'll be prepared for the July 17th meeting. Okay, so the CEQA, or California Environmental Quality Act, you did have a full EIR in this process. The purpose of CEQA is primarily to disclose the environmental impacts of the decision that's being made and to find ways to avoid or mitigate, to the extent feasible, those environmental impacts. I'm going to give the super-high-level overview here and leave it to your questions to dig into these. I anticipate you've watched the Planning Commission meeting where we went into this in a little bit more detail. I wanted to point out that this is a program-level EIR. Some of the concerns that have been raised by the public, I think they're anticipating a project-level EIR that might go into more detail than you would see in a typical project. This is at the program level, and subsequent environmental review for projects that come later will happen over the course of the next 20 years. And so, where those site-specific questions about environmental impacts occur, you'll see those in future environmental review. And I believe that our consultants are prepared to talk a little bit more about this. The pieces that you're looking at tonight, you have the draft EIR, and I really look at the draft EIR as kind of the disclosure document. That's where all the studies are used to evaluate the impact of the decision on the environment, and it gives you all the, you know, the reference materials to go and look at. It talks about the mitigations that will reduce those impacts or evaluate whether they can't be reduced to less than significant. The final EIR is a document that evaluates the public process that happened around the draft EIR, so people will make comments on the draft EIR. It's the opportunity for the EIR to respond to those comments and then, as necessary, amend the draft EIR through ERADA or other means. Interestingly, in our, you know, we typically think of a draft being replaced by a final. The draft and final EIR work together to form the full disclosure and documentation process. And so, that's, the draft doesn't replace the final, it actually works in concert with the final. And so, in the final EIR that you have before you tonight, all of the public comments that were addressed, that were raised, were addressed, and the ERADA were prepared, mostly to try and clarify the draft EIR where the language was, you know, ambiguous or where, you know, more discussion could help illustrate what the draft EIR was trying to find. We did not find in the draft EIR critical flaws in the analysis or impacts that were undisclosed in the draft EIR that would require this to be recirculated. And so, you have now before you the findings of fact and a statement of overriding consideration. This is kind of like the third piece of the EIR process, and the findings of fact really lay out the rationale for the council being able to make that decision on the EIR. And because this EIR did identify impacts to air quality and historic resources that could not be mitigated to a level that's less than significant, the statement of overriding considerations is necessary. The statement of overriding considerations basically says, look, we understand there's an environmental impact that we can't fully mitigate, but it's important to do the project. There are social benefits to the project, or in this case, the plan, that outweigh those environmental impacts. And so, we are planning to, you know, to adopt and certify the EIR and adopt the project anyway. Oops, I want to pause real quick and invite our consultants to fill in gaps or say other items to the EIR before we move on.
Yeah, thanks, David. This is, and council, this is Charles Smith with GHD, the project manager for preparation of the EIR on the consulting side. And not a lot to add to what David has summarized for you, very concise, kind of high-level overview of things. Now, your packet, of course, includes a statement of overriding considerations and some of the details around that rationale, everything from meeting housing needs to growth, social benefits, high-quality development, conservation of natural resources, addressing climate change, those kind of things, and that's all in the packet. So, yeah, I guess I would only also point out that under CEQA, if you think just broad scale, there's kind of three categories of documents, everything on the lesser detailed side of a categorical exemption through an initial study mitigated NEGDEC, and then certainly for projects and plans of this scale, size, complexity, environmental impact report is prepared and is very, I think, we approach this from a very conservative standpoint in identifying the nature of the impacts. And so, when you think about a statement of overriding considerations, that's very typical and very, I would say, to be expected. For a project like this, you can expect that there will be significant impacts, and in the majority of cases, like this plan, those impacts are mitigated. So it's only very few that the statement of override apply to.
And I do want to note before going on that the first time I presented an EIR to City Council, I thought it was really important for you to understand all of the different impacts that were involved in it, and I think I spoke for a solid hour and a half. Is that about right, Karen, solid hour at least? So we'll leave it to your questions to dig into the details. High-level, at a high level, yes. Okay, and then I just wanted to talk real quick about version management. There have been several versions, several iterations of the document. The Planning Commission last weighed in at the end of December last year, and City Council and Planning Commission said, okay, this is the document that we're looking at as our stable project description for the purposes of the EIR. That was the December 2023 version. Since that time, the Planning Commission has been having several meetings to dig into additional detail and try and fine-tune and hone different areas of policy. And so, that resulted in a May 14th version. The City Council looked at that and the list of changes that we'd been tracking from the Planning Commission's discussion on May 15th. And at that time, you focused on the general plan, we didn't look at the Gateway Area Plan. And those comments that you made on May 15th were then incorporated into the current version, which is the May 29 version. Several public members have noted that there may be what they consider to be errors or mistakes. We definitely want to flesh out any changes that haven't been made or unintentional changes that were made over the course of the coming month before we get to your July 17th meeting. I can tell you that there were definitely some technical challenges getting these documents up on the website, and it is, you know, including at one point, you know, a computer crash that, you know, resulted in work that I thought was saved that hadn't been saved, and, you know, so there were definitely some issues. And so, I would not be surprised if there were, if there are still lingering changes. I've gone back through these documents a couple of times, and I feel pretty confident with them. And then, in addition to that, if there's anything that the council wants to change at this point related to the concerns that the public have raised, we can change those. We don't necessarily need to do an autopsy and figure out, was this change intentional or unintentional, or, you know, do we want it or not? If the council wants to make those changes, we can make the changes. So in terms of version management, I wanted to give you a sense for the types of changes. Here's a snippet from the Gateway Area Plan, and you can see in here, as far as I can tell, these kinds of changes where it replaced Figure 1 for Figure 1, these were artifacts of the process that I went through. I'm not sure why these changes happened, they're not substantive. There may be a few like this that you'll see. There were also some changes where, because of the version, for instance, in the Gateway Code, it, a figure was referenced in the text to the wrong figure, and so there were changes that were made like that, that were not directed by, you know, council or commission, but that we found them and we fixed them. So I hope you'll support those kinds of typographical changes. And then you'll also see more substantive changes like this one, where the Planning Commission at one of their final meetings on the Gateway Area Plan said, hey, we want to have this, this policy that we had originally recommended, we removed, we want to see that brought back in. So you'll see substantive changes like this in those as well. The current May 29 version has tracked changes turned on, so you'll see all of the changes indicated by the line on the outside indicating there's a change, and then the underlying strikeout, so that you can see what changes happened from the last one. Previous versions, we haven't tracked all the changes because there have been too many of them, and it would clutter up the document. We're really down to the last couple of changes here, and we want to make sure that we're getting it right. Other changes that I wanted to discuss, just briefly and bring your attention to, this area circled here on the left is the plan, on the right is the code for the Gateway. And this area, we expanded the Gateway neighborhood. When we looked at the 3D modeling, the parcels are really small and close together here, and this area was originally identified as Gateway Hub. And so, we had, you know, proposed to extend the Gateway neighborhood, which have slightly lower building heights into this area as well to, you know, counterbalance the size of the buildings that would be in here. So you'll see that in both the Gateway Plan and the Gateway Code in the current version, whereas prior versions, you would have seen this as Gateway Hub. Also, you'll see throughout the document, some changes that we made where we wanted to identify and incorporate conversation that's happened at the City Council level. For instance, on L Street, there was a lot of discussion around having this be a Woonorf. I know that there were a lot of different take homes from the council discussion. I went back and listened to it multiple times, checked in with council members, and again, we can change this, this is what I think reflects what the discussion was in council meetings, and you can change it. But right now, what we've done, instead of having the maps redone, which costs more money, we've added the word Woonorf to an area where this map will be modified to show this as a Woonorf. Currently, Sixth Street, you can see here, is identified as a Woonorf. And so, this will be re-cotified, and if there's additional changes that you want to see on L Street to the mapping here, we'll also incorporate those. So just to note that right now, there are areas like this where we haven't changed the map, we've just indicated in writing that the map needs to change. Another change in the Gateway Code was Sixth Street was, which is currently in private property in this segment, but we've identified it as, we want to have this as a, you know, walking street of Woonorf here. Sixth and Seventh Street were mistakenly flip-flopped in the prior version of the Gateway Code. Seventh Street was identified as a green street or a greenway. In this version, it shows Sixth Street as a greenway, so that matches up with the Gateway Area Plan concept for a Woonorf. If you want, we can do the same thing with L Street, identify this as a greenway. They kind of function slightly differently, and we can get into that detail if you want to, but certainly something we can do. So that kind of quickly summarizes the types of changes that have been made. I know you've reviewed the documents and probably have several ideas about issues and directions. I didn't prepare anything for you on this because I didn't have a lot to go with before the meeting. When we get into the general plan, I do have a little bit of background for issues and direction prepared, but I'll just turn it over to the council at this point, unless anybody else has anything else to add on the staff side.
Well, thank you so much, and again, thank you, thank the Planning Commission for all of the hard work that they have done. And now I know we're excited for it to be our turn. City Manager Deemer, can I ask you to put up like a blank sheet? All right, so again, one by one, let's just get the list out there, and then, once the list is out there of all the things that we want to talk about, we can go point by point and get into greater detail. So, Councilwoman Schaefer, let's start with you. What is something that you would like us to discuss?
Do you just want me, my whole, my whole list is not very long, so. L Street, I have a couple of things that are related to both Gateway Plan and Code on that, so inclusionary zoning, ministerial review, and fire protection. So, those are my big four.
I am going to ask that we move the fire protection over to the general plan discussion so that everybody can be a part of that, if that's okay? So let's have another category that we're going to keep for the general plan. Councilmember White?
Ministerial approval, L Street Linear Park, inclusionary zoning, K Street safety redesign as a two-way street, south of Samoa should not be identified as an industrial development. Arcata Fire District.
Wait, hold on, hold on, what is that, south of Samoa?
Sorry. It's all coastal zone, and that's the south of Samoa.
Okay, and so the topic is south of Samoa coastal zone?
Correct.
Okay.
And should not be identified as an industrial development hub, and then Arcata Fire District also.
Okay, and K Street, could you clarify again, Two Street?
K Street safety redesign as a two-way street.
Okay, other items?
Okay, a lot of what I had to talk about was around L Street, again, inclusionary zoning and ministerial review, those were my big three. So I think, let's start with L Street. Sarah, take it away.
Cool. We've talked a lot through this process about the idea of implementation measures, and I think, in my mind, this idea of like, why isn't it in the plan? And they talked about, like, we should make it an implementation measure then, right? So that we can plan for creating this park-like space. We don't have the plans yet, we haven't designed it yet, we haven't done public outreach or anything, but I think that if we, you know, codify it within, in the plan and say, identify and say, you know, this is something we want to implement and have process surrounding down the line, I would like to see that. And with that, kind of goes things like, you wrote Woonorf up there already, and like, so to have within this plan a definition of Woonorf, and like, the one that I've kind of come up with, which I can give you guys my notes later if you want, but like, a common space shared by pedestrians, bicyclists, and low-speed motor vehicles. Like, that seems like the pretty general definition that I've found that is also going to fit, I think, what the vision of L Street is. And then also kind of discussing... And then also kind of discussing, because I kind of see L Street and like, the linear corridor in two pieces. And so there's both the already existing L Street, which is Seventh Street to 11th, basically, and even actually up north to Alliance where the trail goes, because there is also not like car access between 11th and 12th. So there's, you know, that kind of whole extender. But then, there's really to key in on that area between Seventh and Samoa, because currently there is no road there. And I think the general feel of what I got from, from that meeting and from discussion is that we don't want there to be a road there. But to look at, you know, to basically kind of wrap our minds around and understand what, once there are buildings there, what that will look like and what that means for basically accessing those buildings, whether that is directly into that public space, or is that a continuation part of the Woonorf where, you know, if there is maybe bollards and needed access to get into service entrances, or thinking about, you know, response from emergency first responding, et cetera, you know, what that's going to look like. And so it's kind of hard, I think, to conceptualize with what those lots look like now and what that space looks like, that there will need to probably be some level of vehicle access to the backside of those, but while still maintaining enough of a step back that there is park space that exists. And so for me, that looks like too, kind of exploring this idea. It's in the gateway code, it's gateway code 2-38, which is on page 27 and 28 of the gateway code. And it shows that enhanced step back, and it has that little map with those pink lines that show the different areas where we're hoping for an enhanced step back, either due to things like solar shading or proximity to other buildings, et cetera. And so I think, looking at the idea of maybe extending that idea of advanced step back to along that L Street corridor between Samoa and Seventh, so that, you know, it will hopefully retain kind of this, this idea I think people have of both, you know, being able to enjoy that open space, walk on the trail, you know, I imagine things like benches and play equipment along the line, whatever it might be, you know, going into a housing complex that has a café on the bottom floor, that has like a beautiful open seating area. Developers, get on that. But, and so, yeah, looking at that strip right there where your cursor just was, no, the other, nope. Yep, there you go. That's L Street. Right? And so perhaps extending the idea of these enhanced step backs to those three blocks right there along L Street, if people are amenable to that. And then in addition to that, I'm just kind of getting all my ideas about the L Street thing out right now. Sorry, you guys, I'm talking a lot. But to also add the linear park to the map in the gateway plan, which is Figure 7, it's on page 61, it's the conceptual open space plan, and to just like, put it in the map and say, hey, this little strip right here, we're going to make it a linear park, and that's going to be an implementation measure that down the road, we're going to do public outreach on and engagement and decide what we want to see here, and what it's going to look like, and how it's going to interact with the space around it. Yeah, that map. Kind of like right on where that red line is there, yeah, and to kind of just recognize that space there. And then I think that we could add language surrounding that to strengthen that idea in Gateway Area GA6 policy. Figure 7 is right by that same policy, so, or that same, Figure 7 is right by GA6, which I think we could just then add language into that also discussing. It's kind of, I guess, GA6C is where it talks about privately owned, publicly accessible space, but I don't know necessarily, because this is obviously city right-of-way in that area, so how that would be incorporated into these two areas. But it might just be a new GA6, whatever letter, but. Okay. And those were my ideas surrounding L Street.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, I think I can agree on most everything that you've said. I'm also for doing that definition for the Woonorf. I would like to also see some enhanced setbacks. I want to make sure that with these implementation measures, to develop detailed design within two years, so if we can put that in there somehow. I know that it's identified explicitly in the gap policies with an implementation measure to develop design standards for the L Street facades, the mobility circulation element, and the open space element. I've been hearing, of course, from constituents that it's very important to preserve the L Street rails with the trail pathway on the L Street corridor from Alliance all the way to Samoa, and also the spaces north of 11th Street and south of Seventh Street. It should be designated entirely, in its entirety, as a linear park for future infill the City of Arcata and the Great Redwood Trail and beyond. I'm not sure that we should allow, and I think I got the policy number, CM5E7, would sacrifice the future of this linear park, I guess? We're not having any of that in, go ahead.
It's general plan, though, too.
Thank you. Right.
But we'll make sure that it gets on the general plan.
It is related to this, but it is, right, that's in the general plan, isn't it?
And I'm sorry, because I think I maybe misspoke at the last meeting when we were talking about the general plan, so apologies for that, but we will talk about it.
Okay.
It's general plan, yeah.
So I, I'm prob, there's probably more? Can I add later if I think of it, or?
Well, I think now's the, the chance to get it all out, and, I mean, there'll be, we can make, like, we can have more conversation about it on July 17 or have another special meeting, but this is the time.
So, yeah, there is a concern of mine of the no net loss. I think that we need to put specific verbiage in there to protect that particular park on L Street. So, you know, I know that, you know, we've been hearing from David that we don't know the future, and that's exactly true. We don't. And so I think that that's why it's so important to put that protective language in there.
All right. And this is what sucks about going last, because you guys took all my things. But, I mean, I just want to strongly agree with everything that everybody said, you know, make sure we talk about setbacks and, and do some public outreach on what a Woonorf would look like. I just think that the L Street linear park is just a really great opportunity for us to have public art and, so, I'm totally happy with all of these. Sarah, it's, um, maybe I'll bring it back to staff and see if they have some.
Let me just ask a couple clarifying questions. So in addition, I'm assuming that there was acceptance of everything that Councilmember Schaefer said, and then Councilmember White added, design within two years within the implementation measure for the linear park.
If that, I mean, is that feasible?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, we put time limits in many implementation measures. I can tell you, we don't always hit those time limits, but it's good to have a goal.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
And, right, like, the idea of an implementation measure too is like, that then, having that in there, that will drive staff to be able to like, pursue grant funding for things like that and.
Absolutely. It also kind of sets a roadmap for, you know, councils as they're going through their goal setting, you know, they can take a look at the general plan and say, okay, these are the things that we want to, you know, take, take into consideration this year. And it's, we're also, this is just an aside, but we're working on changing the way that we do our annual general plan review to the state to try and make it more useful as a communication tool to the Planning Commission, the city council, and the public as well. And part of what we've talked about is taking the implementation measures and putting them into a framework that will allow us to track annually as we're starting to do that reporting. Where are we at on this? You know, do we have to push this out, you know, or, you know, do we have the funding, funding for this now? You know, so that's kind of, in part, I think, a way to help councils now and into the future understand the types of projects we want to be working on.
Wonderful. Thank you. A little bit of process question before we move on. Do you think that now at 6:45 would be a good time to text Councilwoman Atkins Salazar and Vice Mayor Stilman and tell them to?
At least 7:30?
7:30, just so they don't show up and have to like.
Sit with Juan.
Sit with Juan, which is lovely, I'm sure.
Sitting with Juan is not that bad.
Yeah. I'll play good music on.
On this item, let me ask one more clarifying. Councilmember White talked about adding protective language. Would language requiring any proposed alterations to come before the council for consideration, would that, do you think, address your concern around that protective language, but still leave councils in the future the chance to, you know, to see that option before them?
I would like to do that protective language now, being that we don't know who our future council members will be.
I mean, that's up to the three of you.
Well, can I add, I think, like, the place then to put that language would be in that GA6, you know, area to kind of specifically say within there, you know, this area between these streets, between Samoa and whatever, 11th, 8th, 7th, pick one, I mean, I guess maybe we should figure that out. But that, that is designated to be, you know, a preserved open space and linear park for the gateway area. But I do, and I think there's some, some language that could be updated in the CM5E7 policy, but that it does serve a purpose in the sense, and we probably will talk about this when we get there, but I just, I, I think, because it also brings up the Annie and Mary Trail too, and that I do think that with development that we're seeing in Sunset, especially along Craftsman Mall and stuff, there might, that might come into play, you know? And so I guess we'll talk about that when, when we're on general plan. But to just, you know, strengthen that language within the gateway, that, like, it kind of nests within that, right? Yes, there is this policy, there's no net loss of trails, and more specifically, we're looking at no loss of this trail in this specific area. So I think that by beefing that language up in the gateway, it will nest, you know, into the general plan. It's more specific, and that, that should be interpreted for buildings in that gateway area, because it directly affects that area.
So just one question that I've got, because I want to make sure that when we bring something back, that we're clear. I want to remind you all that, like, with the EIR, we're program level, things can change a little bit when you come back, when we do a project level analysis and you have specific projects you're looking at. So my recommendation would be to add intent goal language, but while still allowing yourself the flexibility to have a project propose something to you that gets looked at it there. Otherwise, you have to lock it down now, and it's, and it's in a core element that can't be shifted when they go into the level. So the question is, you know, we're operating kind of at the macro level right now in terms of our review. At that point in time, you want to put your goals, your intent, things of that nature. When somebody comes in with a specific project and you're analyzing it and you're doing your environmental review at the, at the project level, at that point in time, you get into the real specifics about whether or not what they've actually proposed, if there's any variations from it, is acceptable. So the question is, do you want to allow yourself any flexibility at all for somebody to come in? Because if not, we could write this in a way that has the unintentional effect of, I mean, you could always change it later, but has the unintentional effect of kind of like prohibiting flexibility of a project.
I think I speak for the three of us when I say that we're pretty committed to having this be codified.
Thank you. Yes, my sentiments exactly.
All right. Kimberly, you want to go next? Let's talk about inclusionary zoning.
You go first.
Okay. Yeah. So this inclusionary zoning is to apply citywide rather than just in the gap, is that correct? Okay. So should I wait? I just want to make sure that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the text of the general plan land use element includes a policy that will kick in at 15 units with more details as implementation members' numbers, including an indication of that the 2027 housing element will address inclusionary and other housing affordability policies. This could even be included as an implementation measure for like, healthy community element. So I know I'm going off on a little bit there, but want to make sure that that number, 15, because that's what we unanimously asked for, it was not 30, it is 15. And, yeah, I think that's what I have right now.
Yeah, that's what I remember, is 15. All right. Councilwoman Schaefer, you are up. Let's talk about.
I'm sorry, can I?
Sorry?
Can we just address that real quick? No, it's fine. We definitely want to get things done, but the, the inclusionary zoning was moved into the land use code, so it applies everywhere as opposed to just in the gateway area plan. We're currently drafting an ordinance. Jen, did you want to address that real quick?
Yeah, I just wanted to address that the form.
I'm just wondering if we should wait until we're in the general plan and we have our other two council members here for that item.
That's a.
Yeah. Is that okay? This is just specific to the Form-based code.
Okay.
It references, the Form-based code right now references Chapter 9.32, which has been brought up by a community member, so that's kind of why I want to address it right now. And I just wanted to say that we are working on that land use code because it was repealed. So we have to go back with a new ordinance, and we can talk about that more when we talk about the, the general plan. But I just wanted to address that.
Thanks, Jen. All right. Let's talk about ministerial review. Sarah, you want to go first? No, no, no. It's all right.
That's also not to say that we can't put a policy in the gateway that says we want inclusionary zoning here as well.
All right.
I can start. This one, this one is kind of, I see both, both sides of a lot of what we've been hearing. And I think the, the real crux of it is looking at this idea of where, where does ministerial review kick in? Is it at 40 feet? Is it at three, is it over three? Is it at four? Is it, you know, right? And so I, I think there's some confusion there. And so we should just clarify how many stories X number of feet is, just so we're all clear on that. And then, kind of in my mind, which makes me lean to the way of saying, yeah, why don't we just say if it's four stories or more, it goes to the Planning Commission? Currently, we have a Planning Commission that is very familiar with these documents and would know how to interact with them. And I think, yeah, great, Planning Commission is comfortable doing that, let's go. But then it comes into my mind too, however, you know, that's not always going to be the case. We're going to have different planning commissioners. We're going to have, you know, maybe even someday a planning commission that doesn't even remember the gateway area planning process, you know, 10 years down the line, and, and it might look very different. And so at that point, maybe I kick in and, and go back to the other side and then say four stories and up, but I'd just like to hear what you guys think about that and what that means to you guys, because that's kind of where I'm sitting. I know that the public does have some concern, and that might play a little bit into some of the, the fire department concerns as well. Right now, they're saying they, they're not having the, the ability to fight any fires in buildings over, over three stories. So then, if we have a full planning hearing around those buildings that are above three stories, you know, that could be a, a topic of, of discussion at those as well. So those are some things that I'm thinking about ministerial review.
Which is exactly what I was thinking. I think that's, I mean, that's fair, yeah. Go ahead, Kimberly, while I look for my notes.
Okay. I don't want ministerial approval for a seven-story building. No seven-story building should be receiving ministerial approval. That's what I have to say.
Well, right now, it's set at four.
Right. So I just want to make sure that the large projects that qualify for ministerial approval four to six are still announced to the public, and that the public input and discussion is received through the Planning Commission. And I, I am hearing concerns from constituents that those projects could be approved by the zoning administrator and that there would be that lack of transparency. So I feel, yeah, I, I would like to, I think we have a great planning commissioner, commission right now, and I know that we will continue to have a lot of talent in that area, and I do trust them. And so, yeah, I, I'm voting to have our planning commission deal with those.
Anything over three stories, is that what you're saying?
Four or more.
Four or more?
Yeah.
Four or more.
Could be the new slogan, four or more. So, so then, looking at these, these feet, so then, I guess, 47 feet is. So then, looking at these feet, so then I guess 47 feet is considered a four-story building?
Yeah, you could build a four-story in 47 feet. So, yeah, we would just change this to planning commission. Basically, we just eliminate this category. Anything over, anything above 37 feet would go to the planning commission, if that's what you want to change that to.
Yeah, and I'm...
I will note for the council that the planning commission did start a conversation last week questioning why they were looking at projects that they didn't have the authority to have discretion over. They were kind of questioning that, and so, you know, I just wanted to...
Because we're already allowed to have four-story, but is that what you're saying?
No, I think the question was if the planning commission doesn't have any discretion over a project, i.e. that project is ministerial, they were questioning why they were looking at it in the first place. And I'm just throwing that out for context, and I'm not suggesting you stop, you know, this change, but that, you know, it's maybe something that after you make this change over the course of the next year, as you monitor it, have a conversation with the planning commission, check in, how is it going? Does this still make sense? Because essentially, what a planning commission ministerial review will look like is staff will receive the project, we will go through and complete the checklist that we would have done on, you know, a building that's three stories or less, for a building that's four stories or less, same checklist. It goes through and evaluates, does this project comport with the objective standards that we have in our code? We'll put that into a staff report and say, you know, staff has reviewed this, it meets the design standards, all the objective design standards, you must approve it pursuant to the Housing Accountability Act and, you know, the process that we've outlined. Planning commission will then stand there and review it and say, okay, we've got this checklist, we have to approve it, so we're moving this forward. It does provide more opportunities for the public to review it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, at least it's presented in public and people have a chance to make comments, you know, it will be able to talk about, you know, the fire department and, yeah, and if that's what it needs to be. And again, you know, in a year or two, we can revisit it and see if it's, like, really redundant.
Or it might work well, we don't know, we have to find that out.
I concur, and I think it's really important for transparency that the public gets to see the process. And I remember, if I'm not mistaken, it was the Mad River, Mad River Garden, the Garden Apartments, not Mad River, sorry, Westwood, right. It was something that, as a planning commissioner, we were really stuck on because it met all the requirements, it checked all the boxes, so we needed to approve it, but that conversation ensued and things did change. So I think it's important that it does come still before the planning commission, and it allows the community to see input. And as you pointed out, it is a living document, so, you know, after a year or however, we find that we might need to do some updates, we can certainly do that.
Okay, so Kimberly, the last two are yours, so I'm just going to let you go for it.
There it is, K Street, and let's start with that, K Street Safety Redesign.
So K Street Safety Redesign as a two-way street should be identified as a policy in the, I guess, the circulation mobility element with an implementation measure indicating that it will happen in two years? Is that some timeline that we can actually talk about?
Yeah, and again, that's part of the general plan, so you may want to...
General plan, right, so we can't do it in both, is that, even though it's still in the gateway area plan? I mean, in the...
Yeah, the measure, the policy that you're talking about and the implementation measure are in the general plan, so we can talk about that as a whole council.
Okay, so then we can talk about the slow street program and talk about the timelines that maybe that could happen within a five-year draft, and the circulation mobility element implementation, we can do all that. Okay, so the next one then is the Samoa. Thinking of sea level rise and thinking of sustainability and what's good for our environment, and if we're thinking that this area is going to be likely to be flooded or in an area where the groundwater is going to cause problems within 15, 20 years, heaven forbid, could even happen sooner, we don't know, it's just not sustainable. There are plenty vacant properties that are underutilized in the industrial zone locations in other areas of Arcata. I feel that we should maybe encourage new development somewhere else and not where we know it's, you know, shifting sand. And, you know, even though we might get housing, which is a good thing, for 10, 20 years, maybe even 30, I think of long-term and the money that goes into that and our planet. And I just would like to see something that is more long-term sustainable.
Where I am at with that is, that's really not for us to decide, that's up to a developer.
Well, south of Samoa is also in the general plan, and it's also in the local coastal program, so I would encourage having the other council members present for that.
It's also where all the poor people live, so I guess I'm just really concerned that a developer may come in and do these things, and we're going to be having to move these folks, we're going to be looking for grants then to relocate them when all is said and done, so, you know, pay now, pay later.
Well, let's pause and reflect on that when the rest of our council... Oh my goodness, why did that go so quickly? Does anybody have anything else?
We're going to talk about the Arcata Fire District within the general plan?
So in the general plan, we will talk about the fire district. We will talk about, we'll talk again about inclusionary zoning, I believe. K Street will go on that list as well as south of Samoa, and then whatever else the rest of us decide. So I'm going to take a break, oh, no, give it, I'm sorry. Go, go, we have plenty of time.
I just wanted to get clarification. I wrote down all of the discussions that were happening. I feel like on the L Street, we have unanimity about all of these topics on inclusionary zoning, we're going to talk about in the general plan in more depth, but we can add a policy in the gateway plan, I think there was unanimity on that. And then on ministerial review, I got twinkles on four stories changing Table 2-19 to eliminate the zoning administrator review of four-story buildings. There was a comment that do anything over four stories have notice, they already do in the current code, and then there was a statement that seven stories should not have ministerial approval, and I don't know where the council has landed on that.
But they don't, right?
They don't.
Or you, but planning commission ministerial approval versus discretionary approval, is that what you're...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, so it's hard for me, I guess, to parse the difference almost, in a way, because when you have a set of policies and code, the approval process is based on that set of policies and codes, and how objectively the developer is meeting those standards, so...
That's correct.
Like, but really, like, so that in my mind, then, I guess I'm not really understanding the difference then, of what a discretionary approval of a seven-story building or a five or a six-story building would look like versus the planning commission doing a ministerial approval of one of those buildings.
Yeah, under current housing law at the state level, there really would be no substantive difference between those two. When a project comes in, a housing project that comes in that has, that meets all the design standards, it cannot be reduced in density, it cannot be reduced in size, and it has to be approved if it meets those standards. I suppose if a hotel, for example, were proposed at seven stories, yeah, actually, no, the ministerial approval only kicks in if it has residential component, so hotel would require a discretionary review anyway. So, yeah, there really, it's a distinction without a difference.
Would a hostel be just like a hotel?
What, a hospital would?
Hostel.
Hostel? Yes, similar to a hotel.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm of the opinion that, to me, I mean, I think to keep it kind of clear, especially with that table, that like, that's what we're going for with this plan, that it has a ministerial pathway, and that, you know, that we are guaranteeing at four to seven stories that there will be a public hearing, there will be planning commission ministerial review of the project. So that's my vote.
Yep, that's my vote as well. But we don't have to vote on it now, because right now, unless staff has anything else to add?
No, I mean, it would be great to see three twinkles on that, because then we could change it in the code if not.
Are you okay?
So this code has to be approved by the three of you.
Yeah, I approve of that.
I still do not want to see any ministerial approval of a seven-story building.
But don't we have to by, like, law?
We can write into our code that a seven-story building will require discretionary design review. In effect, in practice, it'll be the exact same thing.
I mean, if that's what it takes to get it passed, but if there's no difference, it's... I mean, I guess, at what point, there's not a no, right? Because it's, has, so, yeah.
And is there a way, I mean, I guess, to, like, distinguish the language between, like, housing and non-housing types? Because, I mean, I guess that's a concern, but as you said, then it wouldn't, it would be discretionary anyway if it was a hotel, for example, or whatever, but...
Yeah, so currently, in order to be considered for the ministerial review process, a project has to have, meet these standards, which includes being built at a density of 32 units per acre, that's dwelling units. So it has to have a housing component. If it's a non-housing project, hotel or hostel, it doesn't fall under the Housing Accountability Act, doesn't fall under our ministerial review process either.
And I feel like then, as you just said, if we did decide to make it discretionary, it would be going against the Housing Accountability Act, right? I mean, it would...
You can still call it discretionary, it's just that your discretionary review is limited to those things that you've adopted as objective standards.
Well, from where I fall, I can't envision a seven-story building being built in Arcata in the next 10 years, really, so I'm okay if it says discretionary, I'm, you know, we'll see what happens.
So right now...
I just, I want to understand, like, what the issue, Kimberly, like, can you explain it? Because I'm just, for me, I'm not seeing the difference, and so I want to hear from you what you're seeing as the difference here, so I can understand it a little bit better. Because for me, I'm not seeing that there is any difference at, you know, at seven, five, six, seven stories of what discretionary and ministerial mean, as long as it's still going before the planning commission. And so I, it's, yeah.
I don't want to hold everything up on one small minor semantics, if you will, so I guess you got my twinkle.
Okay, all right. Fantastic.
And can we go back real quick? Because I said, I guess, yes, we should decide this, like, when we're talking about this L Street corridor, and I'm looking at the map here, but, I mean, really, the original road idea was to go all the way, yeah, through to Alliance there. The chunk kind of that's between, oh, buddy, that's 12th Street, yeah, 12th Street up to Alliance is already virtually a wooner, in a sense that it dead-ends and it, you know, then the trail curves off that way. And so, I mean, just to, like, come to the decision that, like, when we were talking about this L Street Linear Park corridor, that we are looking at Samoa to Alliance? And is that what we're feeling on that? Is that what other folks think? Because like, that, in my mind, that's what it's looking like.
That was what my understanding was, yeah.
Okay, because we already kind of have some of those elements that I imagine we will enhance and grow upon, like, you know, the bollards that are between 11th and 10th there, where, like, the trail kind of cuts into the road and all of those pieces, and so, and kind of how, you know, L Street dead-ends into, like, where the bike library is and all that. So how, like, that could also be part of this general open space over...
Well, and I'll just share, because I think it's that point, when we originally designed this trail, we had a lot of alternatives, both for the northern section, you can see where the railroad goes through in between the mini storage, I mean, that was sort of an original design, and that would have felt really daunting for people to go through. So we were able to negotiate the alternative route. But if, let's say, that mini storage came in for a complete redesign, there could be some interesting concepts on that north side that might improve that trail. Alternately, on the very southern side of it, to shunt down, you come out at an odd space right there at 255, that was not our desirable space originally when we planned that trail. So even a small modification to do a really nice section of park in that last block to better align that trail to where it crosses 255, could have some really nice features. So, I mean, these are really subtle changes, but it's why I suggested some language to give a future council some discretion around something that would really make it a better user experience. If you're really going to start to invest money in building out that linear park, it could be really cool. You might want to see very minor tweaks in that alignment. But again, we can talk about that general policy when we talk about the general plan overall.
Okay, okay, well, I am going, yeah?
I'm just going back and thinking of something that Dr. Judith Mayer had brought up about the facade, and she was really concerned about, say, like, loading ramps, face, did we ever address that?
Loading ramps?
Well, say, a building, you know, the entrance, like, if, could they put, turn themselves around and have the loading ramp where we would have this lovely vernif, which would not be eye appealing at all.
Yeah, and I think that comes down to the design within the implementation, the council member Schaefer really talked about what is going to be the access to those properties and those remaining areas that don't currently have car vehicle access to them, and are there ways that we can limit that, that allow that design to, you know, to be maximized.
I will now continue the public hearing of the Gateway Area Plan and all other related things to Wednesday, July 17. And with that, let's take a five to whatever minute break until our colleagues get here. Thank you, stick around for Act Two. All right. Let's come back. I don't want Doug to win our contest. All right. Can we all come back? Okay. That's Karen's. Okay, we are on to Item B, which is Consider Adoption of the General Plan, Conspirentive Update with the Exception of the Gateway Area Plan. So just like last time, we're going to start this item with public comment that's specific to this item. If you are interested in providing a public comment regarding the city's general plan, this is your chance. Please line up at the podium or raise your Zoom hand now. So just to let Vice Mayor Schaefer Stillman and Councilmember Kinsalazar, kind of the process that we did for the Gateway Area Plan seemed to work very well, is we're going to do public comment, we'll have a staff report, and then we're just going to list all of the topics that we want to talk about, just to get them all out there without any discussion, and then we'll go line by line and each give our feedback. And we already have a couple that are already up there that we have fired. So general plan, we have the K Street, south of Samoa, we also have the fire district. But let's start by taking public comment. So stand up if you are interested in doing so.
Okay, good evening. Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. For those who were present earlier, many of the comments I made about the Gateway Plan really apply to the general plan update as well, in part because, you know, thanks to the direction from this council, a lot of the best policies in the original Gateway Plan were moved to other elements in the general plan to apply citywide. And that includes critical street safety, bike pedestrian and transit support, land use and parking reform policies, which will foster, as I said earlier, a more affordable, equitable, healthy, safe, and environmentally sustainable community, in this case, citywide, not just in the Gateway Area. The previous general plan was already pretty good, really a truly admirable and forward-thinking document for its time, but it is 20 years old and due for an update, and the currently proposed changes significantly strengthen its policies to support vibrant and sustainable community. They reflect the last two decades of research on effective land use and transportation policies. And those policies, again, like the Gateway Plan, have been reviewed extensively by the Planning Commission and many other committees and organizations. There's no doubt, I think, that the result is really a huge improvement and a great document, a huge step forward for the city, and we would strongly encourage you to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the number one issue you need to address is the fire district. And you needed to really pay attention to those Planning Commission meetings of what was said on those two different dates, August 4, 2022, and also January 10, 2023, and basically listen to what they said, because it's, from the standpoint of how they would have addressed something even at three to four stories right now, was pretty shocking. I didn't realize how many of them were just volunteers, and they, you know, they went into depth that how, basically, they haven't even been trained to go into that. And to actually ask somebody who's a volunteer to like go into that situation, it's a whole different level of intensity from the standpoint of the equipment, you know, that they have to tank to breathe, and we're talking about like 100 pounds of gear. Imagine that when ladders are even set up. I mean, I doubt of the Planning Commission how many people this quickly approved of this could go up three stories on a ladder. Imagine all that gear. Imagine trying to bring somebody who's, you know, injured or freaking out. But I'll tell you, in December, when I was in Miami, I was at a 23rd floor and the fire alarms went off, and it basically screamed, "Do not use the elevators." And, I mean, it is like intense that you're racing down the stairs and you're wondering like, what floor am I going to hit smoke at? Am I going to like try to run through there? Am I going to wait? So I really think you need to, like, before you even make the decision, to like bring the fire district back and just address how these individuals like are going to save people even at a sorrow place, because that was the example they gave with two oven fires. And, you know, I've kept track of this situation, the number of fires that are in the US that are like in mid-rises, and it's kind of like shocking how quickly, it's not the flames, it's the smoke, and the amount of people that could get, that are killed in the stairways because they can't get through. And things really go bad quickly. The fire departments, they try to respond, but there's 10 minutes and you have a lot of people that are dead in that time. So we need to like address this, and I still can't even believe you're going to take a vote before our study is even done. I heard it was the end of 2024, that, you know, so how can it, as a body, you really, legally even, morally, make a judgment without the information? And this goes even to other things, as far as what the building in the coastal zone too, from the standpoint, you have a lot of money that the state invested in studies there, and you're going to actually make decisions before you get all that information? So I would wait to get the information and get more information from the experts.
Hi, I'm Melody Meyer, and I want to express my support for the general plan. I think it builds on a lot of really great existing policies, and I appreciate the attention to detail to make it safer for pedestrians and people who ride bikes or take other forms of transportation besides cars. And I just wanted to, you know, express my support for the plan, and I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Chris Richards again. Seemed like I was just up here moments ago. Trying to make some kind of coherence, coherency out of my notes. The, in the agenda packet, you're talking about inconsistencies with the local coastal plan, the old version and the new version, and that that needs to be certified, or they need to have you go one way or the other with what we use to pass or adopt the general plan 2045, if I'm reading it right. But the syntax, there was a sentence in there that made, it's missing what it needs to be a complete sentence. Anyway, I fully support that we get it together with that local coastal element as soon as we can. And I don't know what the legality is with passing all of this without having a clear pathway with that. But anyway, I think that's important. The fire district was spoken on, and I, as I said before at the other segment, I think we really need to have our ducks in a row with that before we start allowing building to happen. I suppose you could agree to it and say, okay, once we get to the point where we know what the study says and what the cost's going to be to improve our fire department to take care of a larger, taller city, then, you know, that, we'll see where we're at in a couple of years, the way the economy's going, who knows what's going to be available for the fire district to increase their capabilities. Implementation measure process for upzoning, my first thought would be just to scrap that and do it later, not add that in the general plan now, and make each one of those zones a similar process like the gateway went through. It's just too generic, the way it goes through, and with an implementation measure, it's not, I don't think it's going to create what's necessary for the public and developers and, you know, the process for everything to work out better. So I would look heavily at avoiding doing those as an implementation and adding that later as a, something to do. I don't understand that process completely. We've got a little bit of time. Oh, yeah, that's not important. I'm curious how that implementation measure would work with the recusal process that we're grappling with on this, when it comes to the council working through all these different areas, Bayview, you know, and all of that, if that's an issue with that as well.
Thank you.
Anyway, think about that process a bit more. Thank you.
Council members. Don Colwell, Sunset area. Been a renter in Arcata, now property owner in the Sunset area since 1985. I'm asking if the implementation measure in Section LU9 that allows overlay rezoning for mixed-use commercial and denser housing in current RL neighborhoods be removed from the general plan? We already have densified. How exactly would a density overlay zone mesh with neighborhood conservation areas that we already have and hopefully will still have in the general plan? And frankly, the idea that a developer would add small commercial businesses within the Sunset area in particular, while vacant storefronts dominate the Murphy's Market Shopping Center on Alliance, and the CPH Craftsman complex will include a market and dining facilities all walkable from the Sunset neighborhood, it seems very unlikely that a developer would actually consider doing that, and so I'm confused as to why we have that moving forward as an implementation measure for the neighborhood that I live in. I've listened to former Mayor Schaefer say publicly that we need to provide housing for CPH students. I disagree. It's CPH's responsibility to do that, and it's the city's job to consider the needs of all of its renters, all of its residents, renters and owners alike. In Arcata's general plan, under the RLD zoning definition, it is stated that under current state land use and planning laws, single-family zones may allow multiple dwelling units per lot, up to four residential units in most RL lots. With the state density boning law, these could be six-story buildings. Our neighborhoods are already densely populated with granny units, garage conversions, and mother-in-law units, both permitted and grandfathered, to the point where two-way streets are effectively one-way in the Sunset area due to the number of cars parking on streets. Now that the Open Door Clinic on Sunset is running, daytime street parking has increased even more as employees park on Sunset, so the clinic parking lot is available to patients. Here's a nightmare scenario. A developer purchases two parcels to the south of my home. They demolish existing houses, obtain approval to merge the two parcels into one larger parcel. They build a multi-story apartment with commercial businesses on the first floor next to my home without parking minimums. The height of the new building causes solar shading to my existing solar array, rendering it useless. My home and yard, formerly a sanctuary, are now the view looking north of my new neighbors. Do I have recourse? Should I sell my property to the same developer and leave Arcata? With an overriding density overlay zone essentially trumping the residential low-density zoning that was in place when I purchased my property in 1985, it seems like that is a possibility that could happen. Would density overlay zones supersede Arcata's historic preservation statutes? And what about neighborhood conservation areas that are called out in the general plan that require review of changes to assure that new projects are harmonious? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, council members. I'm Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. I've limited what I'm going to speak tonight to just six items. Some of them you already have covered. The first is inclusionary zoning, which I think you're going to put as an implementation measure in the general plan. As the director said, it can also be added to the Gateway Area Plan. Second, I strongly recommend removing the LU9 implementation measure, which would upzone Bayview, Sunset, North Town, and Upper INJ Street to four-story buildings. More importantly, it would upzone it to allow commercial neighborhood uses, so there could be coffee shops in that neighborhood. On ArcataOne.com, there's a fictitious depiction of what four-story buildings in Bayview would look like. It's disastrous. The, I also recommend the removal of LU1F- the removal of LU1F, which is development of a diversity of housing types. It reads, partially, I quote, "to calls for an appropriate balance between single-family housing on individual lots and multi-unit housing types." This is a relic from the previous general plan. I don't think it's possible, today's climate. And I'm of the belief that you're letting yourself open to a future lawsuit from the Realtors or Builders Association. There will not be what is regarded as an appropriate balance between single-family housing in the next 20 years, in my view. Next, the protection of the L Street corridor trail in CM-5E7, very simple matter. No matter what anyone says, adding 10 words to this will make people feel much less anxious about the possibility of being moved. Very simple. The notion of tenement housing came up before. This was changed to co-op housing. This is incorrect, as we know. That also can be very easily changed to do something which I think is beneficial to the city. Not call it tenement housing, but call it what it is, shared housing with shared bathrooms and possibly shared kitchens. Last, the Gateway Area Plan still contains some policies, or excuse me, the general plan contains policies that were transferred to it from the Gateway Plan that need some rewording. These are minor matters, but they should be taken care of so that there's not a conflict of interest. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor Matthews and members of the council, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Elizabeth Connor. As many of you know, I followed this process from the beginning. I've watched most of the meetings and attended a lot of the hearings and have read all of the documents. And based on that, I think that the updates to the general plan that are being considered are excellent, and I encourage you to pass them. I think the changes will move Arcata in the right direction, using the latest and best land use practices. It is forward-thinking. I say yes to more bike lanes, sidewalks, and less parking mandates. I say yes to walkable communities. I say yes to more densities and more housing, so we can make the best use of our land to preserve our open space and working agricultural lands. And as a lot of you know, this was really one of the main pieces of Arcata General Plan 2020. And those of us who worked on it, this was the central core of what we wanted to happen. And so to see these changes, and even more along in this direction of preserving our open space, is very heartwarming. And I applaud you for those decisions. As far as affordable housing, as you all know, we are facing some extreme challenges on the national and state level as far as funding for affordable housing and homelessness. What we can do is pass progressive policies on the local, policies and programs on the local level, so we have a chance to maintain ourselves. And as we know, all these policies, we will create more housing. It's not going to drastically reduce housing costs. It might level them out. We continue to need affordable housing programs specifically. And that's why I applaud your council for making the decision to take the threshold for inclusionary zoning down to 15 units. And I wanted to specifically mention that I spoke to at the joint study session that you had with the Planning Commission last year about my extreme concerns about some of the ways that the state density bonus, the community benefits program, and inclusionary zoning program weren't working together. They weren't playing nicely together. And I feel that staff and the decisions you've made in tweaking that have been really good. I've read that over three times, and I can tell you, as a developer, it makes sense to me as I go down it. I could understand the provisions in it. And I think that the main change that happened there was housing affordability was considered the key, the key thing, right, of the community benefits. It was taken out of the list and put as an essential. And so again, I want to thank you. This means that we can look towards people who work in our community that are starting out, that are low-income seniors like myself, that work in our local businesses, that work in restaurants and gas stations, that they too can pay less than 50% of their income from housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. I've been a Sunset neighborhood owner since 1985. I'm going to speak to the quality of life of our little neighborhood. It's an existing historical neighborhood for all homeowners and renters. We're modest neighborhood, mostly single-story 1930s, 1940s bungalows. Two-story is maximum height. Zone residential low density. All current homeowners bought in without assurance of privacy and quality of life. Our reality, infill of permitted and unpermitted ADUs, garage conversions, is 29 units per acre. I wouldn't call that low density, and this is from our Mr. Lawyer's estimate. So already we've got a neighborhood that is well-served for owners and renters. If our existing height restriction of two stories becomes four to six stories, imagine you're the single-story bungalow. You lose all privacy. Backyard, front yard, decks, porches, that could be for a whole block. And what have you got to look at? Maybe your solar is impacted. Certainly, your garden would be. This is a historical residential neighborhood. Our existing parking and traffic flow, ride a bike through our neighborhood, let me know if you feel safe. We have two-way streets where it's bumper-to-bumper parking because of the density, and even average or small cars have to yield for the incoming traffic. So is it safe for bikers? This is how it is existing. Now, as far as the commercial, so that's something, hmm, let's think about this. Right now, it's walkable. We have commercial district right on Alliance, large, locally-owned grocery, three empty storefronts that are built, that are empty, that could be viable businesses that are zoned out. They have a huge dedicated parking lot. In addition, on the corner, there's a huge commercial empty lot. So folks, open your eyes. How can we keep, how can we look at historical neighborhoods that is residential low density and turn it commercial, or turn it to four to six-story buildings? The existing code protects our neighborhoods for all residents. It's essential to
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To staff and the council, James Becker, I did fail to mention that last time, as I do quite often. I did want to speak just quickly in general to the policy CM5E7, which I did send out emails with further description and would encourage in some fashion to exclude the L Street rails with trails pathway from that language, just to solidify the protection in the future, which I think will be a tremendous, you know, value to the entire infill, you know, as it's built out and designed, you know, potentially. And with that in mind, and then also in terms with future other, other Class 1 trails, you know, just to take into consideration also when designers are moving forward or developers are moving forward with the possibility of moving those too, so as not to just limit it to the L Street trail. On a different note, another policies that affect the gateway and are in the general plan is a number of design policies. And I just encourage the greater council to support both future infill and existing neighborhoods by balancing massing, citing and setbacks and setbacks to accommodate those new housing needs, but still while maximizing the existing rooftop solar and the potential, you know, what could be there. In addition to just general quality of life, and I think the balance can be struck there. I think sometimes in this rush to talk about this housing need and maximizing massing, you can lose sight of just, you know, it working within the whole realm. And I'd hope that potential is there. And then beyond that, some of those, sorry about that, unfortunately, I didn't write this down, so I have to refer to the old phone. Some of those design policies are D6B, human scale and pedestrian-friendly, D6G, building placements, D6, that was G, and then C6B, use of setbacks and use of setback areas, D1C, human scale massing, D1F, transition to lower housing intensities and uses, D1A, pedestrian-friendly design, and LU1D, car-free lifestyle. These policies were all drawn out of the gateway draft, and there was like, a lot of language in there, just, you know, the potential and, you know, the hopes and things. And I think that these should be looked at. And I know this isn't really, other than maybe just remembering those, you know, as we move forward, wherever that can be sort of placed and reflected and looked in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to keep mine brief, since I know you have a lot to do. I'm going to go back to CM-5E7 again. Like I stated before, I find it very vague and general. So I'd like to, it starts out saying, "In general," I'd like you guys to strike that and just start with retain the current total linear feet. And then also, I really believe that trails, once established, should not be moved. If you have to tweak them slightly, as Karen commented earlier, that maybe, you keep them still on the same street, you still keep them still on that same corridor. So maybe make the language so it can't be moved to a whole different area, and so it's not a whole different, you know, pathway. Because I think once you have a historic, you know, way of travel, people like to stay on that. And in that same policy, it talks about active transportation, and it seems like we're opening up the door to include cars in our active transportation, and it shouldn't be. It should be all human-powered mobility. So I, my concern is, like, when we're exploring the Runif concepts in other areas, especially along the L Street corridor, and then we want to expand it to other areas, that that's not adding in cars onto a pathway. So like, the section from Seventh Street to Samoa, that we keep the Runif on the section of L Street that's already established as a street, and we don't expand it out onto those pedestrian right-of-ways and our green spaces. So I kind of like would see that in all of the city, protected a little bit more with a little bit more stronger language, and cut it out, cut out the discretion of the developers to change the public's right-of-ways and the community's right-of-ways. So, and so, I guess, there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else in person comments on the general plan? I think everybody talked. Okay, let's go to Zoom. All right, our first speaker is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, council members. I want to say that protecting community resources and neighborhood values and character are goals of the General Plan 2045. We still have control over our community and how it develops into the future. We have not been stripped of our autonomy, nor has the state tied our hands. This simply is not true, no matter how often it is repeated. Putting the decision-making in the hands of one person is not wise. Decisions that will change the face of this community forever. Building height, obviously, the big game changer, is tied to zoning, and zoning is your key to control where you zone and how. We can provide ample housing into the future while continuing to protect our historic homes, our resource lands, and the unique character of our town by continuing to be thoughtful in our approach to development, by protecting our residential low RL neighborhoods, and by including many great minds into the review process through the city's committees, Planning Commission, and when applicable, the city council. I am passionately opposed to ministerial review for anything over two stories in the general plan, and my fear is this is going to backfire terribly with the burden to bear on the Arcata City Council. Please remove LU-9 from the implementation measures in the land use element. Do consider that care must be taken to not rezone too much land for multifamily by expanding RM or RH zonings into our existing RL neighborhoods. In the long run, this will result in the loss of resources, including historic, agricultural, and forested hillsides, as we potentially grow too fast, resulting in the state demanding we accommodate even more growth in order to keep our housing elements certified. It is a vicious cycle that I do not believe we want to find Arcata facing. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right, our next online speaker is call-in user number six. Go ahead. Call-in user, can you unmute? All right, we'll come back to you. We'll go to Karice. Hope I pronounced that right. Go ahead.
Hello.
Oh, that's call-in user. All right, go ahead.
Hi, sorry. This is, good evening, council. This is Kathleen Stanson. And I just want to say I really oppose having only the community development director, just one person approval for allowing four-story buildings in neighborhoods, because it's just so controversial. I recommend anything that is three stories or higher, go to the Planning Commission for ministerial review. As an appraiser, once you allow multi-story apartment buildings throughout the city, you establish that as the highest and best use for land in established, low-density, single-family residential neighborhoods, which promotes the demolition of houses. This will drastically disrupt the community character and harmony and quality of life of these cherished neighborhoods, and, in my opinion, become an adverse impact to your plans. And this is just not well-thought-through. You know, you start to create a highest and best land use, and then everybody is moving in that direction. You know, electric cars are the way of the future, and I just don't understand why the city is so negative to providing parking, especially when we're going to have these kinds of cars in the next 20 years. There's not even any EV charging stations in the plan, and there should be. I believe we need much more parking, and parking areas with solar panels positioned as canopies that look like carpools. And I really can't seem to get my head around how someone lives in an apartment with insufficient parking. You know, for instance, you go to the market, and then you have to park blocks away from your apartment and schlep your groceries for blocks. And I just don't see this as a quality way of life, especially for elders. We need more, not less, parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Karice, go ahead.
Hi there. Hello and good evening, council members and Mayor Matthews. My name is Karice Hironimo. I am an alum of Cal Poly Humboldt, a former member of the Energy Committee, a member of CRTP, and have met many of you in previous volunteer roles for the city and city events. I want to express my support for the updates to the general plan, as many of these updates are responsive to critical needs for the Arcata community, and I believe we should continue to prioritize housing and safety of people over speed and movement of vehicles on city streets. I also support modes of transportation that are healthier, more economical, and environmentally sustainable. As an avid cyclist and proponent of transportation mode shift, I have been involved with opportunities to provide input in the past, and I'm really grateful to know of the significant effort behind this plan. I appreciate the council's meaningful work for this community and for supporting the development of a walkable, bikeable, transit-friendly Arcata. This vision for the community is why I am supportive of the general plan updates. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, we have no other online public comment for this item. All right, then I am going to All right, then I am going to go back to staff. Let's get a staff report, and then we will come back to the council to start listing some items.
And I'm going to do just a really brief recap of the process for council members who weren't here for the Gateway segment. For more on this, please re-watch this at home. Okay, so just quickly going over the approval process, California Environmental Quality Act, actually scratched that, I'm not going to go into that, I removed it because all of you cannot talk about that. We'll talk about version management and then jump into issues. So quickly, we have split up this agenda item into two agenda items, the one, the Gateway EIR and Gateway Code, that the three have been reviewing, and then now, today, the general plan balance that the full council can consider. We're not taking a formal action tonight. It is noticed for the June 5th meeting, so the full council minus our mayor, who will not be there, will be able to review the general plan again, take any public comment at that time, and ask any additional questions of staff that may have come up. And at that time, you'll continue that to your July 17th hearing, which will be a regular meeting where you can start to take action. Again, we'll break this into two action items for the 17th, where Meredith Kimberley and Sarah will take action on the three items that the other two are recused on, and then the full council will be able to take a look at the general plan resolution 23449. Since the ordinance for the Gateway Code takes two readings, it'll come back on August 7th, and again, only Meredith Kimberley and Sarah will take action on that. So we're hoping tonight to get specific direction on amendments to the general plan so that we can bring those back for your July 17th meeting. Okay, so jumping into version management, your current version is the May 29 version. It can be found on our SERP webpage. I've got a cute little QR code there for you, and that's paired with other elements of the general plan as well. In terms of the version management, you'll see track changes in this current version. You'll recall from the city council's review on the May 15th of the planning commission's work up until May 14th, certain changes were made, such as the one described here, where you changed tenement, the word tenement, which the majority of the council felt had a negative connotation to cohousing. So that change has been made in the current May 29 version. You'll see all of those in underlined, strikeout versions, so that you can find them easily throughout the document by scanning. They're all in color, so if you're looking at it on the web, you'll be able to identify those quickly. There have been comments to the effect that there may be some missing changes here, and one I acknowledge, there's been a lot of effort that's gone into this. We've had technical issues as well that have led to certainly potential for human error. So if you find those, the idea is that we want to try and correct those by July 17th, if we need, if we can. I will tell you that I am still finding errors in our general plan 2020 to this day, and so I'm, I'm certain that, you know, because this is a human endeavor, that we may end up with those as well, but we'll do our best. So you'll see these kinds of track changes. They're intended to reflect the decisions that have been made up to this time. You'll also see issues like, or items like this, this is in the growth management element. It's the GM dash A, which shows the urban services boundary, and a couple of other boundaries. In this case, it shows our sphere of influence. You'll recall from prior direction from the council that you wanted to remove the sphere of influence from areas that the city does not intend to annex. The sphere of influence was used in the general plan 2020 as a means to try and attempt to protect these areas by this inference that they were under our influence. That's legally not what a sphere of influence is. It literally means this is the area that you want to annex and turn into urban development. So it does the exact opposite of what the intent was at that time. So in this map, because of, you know, the history that I won't go into now, we currently show sphere of influence in areas that are outside our, our city boundary. And instead of amending the maps now for this version, what I've done is just shown that this area will be removed from the sphere of influence. So you'll see here on the western side of Arcata, in the overall map, we zoom in, and you can see this crosshatched is indicated as being in the sphere of influence, outside of our city boundary, shown as this little dashed line here. We'll be removing that in the final map, assuming that you concur with that, which I believe you already have. There's a secondary process to that that we'll discuss when we get there, where we have to go through LAFCO and Vanessa Blodgett, who's here with Plan West. Plan West also serves as our LAFCO agency, and she can address those questions if you have them in more detail. So again, looking at version management, you'll see these kinds of changes that will be reflected in the final version with revised maps. It won't say in our general plan, remove from sphere of influence, it'll actually be removed. And then I think, you know, having gone through that, I, the next set of slides are issues that I think we've heard come up from council members, that they're hearing from the public, so I'll just save those, and we can jump into those when you get to them. If you have any questions about that really fast staff report I gave, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, I think we're gonna, Karen, if you want to put that list back up, and I am going to start with Councilwoman Akinsal Azars, because you never go first anymore.
Do you want to review? We do have several topics already on this list.
Yes.
So we have the fire district, we have inclusionary zoning, we have southeast Samoa coastal zone and industrial zoning, we have K Street safety and design as a two-way street are the five-four that we have on right now for discussion.
All right, so yes, so we're just going through, if you have, did you pick anything out?
Yeah.
Anything to add? And we're just gonna, not going to discuss them yet, just put them out there.
Okay, and before I give a few things to add, just, I think what would be helpful just to clarify, there's been a little bit of, we're talking about process of the meetings, and there's been a little bit of concern that when we talk about, oh, we will be continuing, you know, the, the discussion from one meeting to the next, and that members of the public have felt that we are going to use that as a way to say that we won't be having public comment at those meetings, and I just want to be really clear that that is not the intention, that we will be having the same public comment at each meeting, whether the item is continued on to those meetings or not. So just to clarify that.
So to clarify and reiterate, we're legally required to? So even if we wanted to, we couldn't avoid it? We have to have public comment at those meetings?
Okay, so we're all really clear on that. So I think trails in general, we can put up CM five E seven, that's a, and I have a broader discussion of that, local coastal plan, historic preservation. I think those are my three to start.
Vice Mayor Stillman. Turn your microphone on.
Excuse me. Billboards, you've got that, you heard it. I was also concerned about the Arcata Plaza design and being able to close down vehicular traffic. That's another item. And I wanted to talk about the Bayview neighborhood. I just wanted to give some history on it, if everyone is willing to listen to that. And, oh, loud cars, under, under the noise health and safety.
Okay, Kimberly?
So LU nine, LU one F, CM five.
So, 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 so.
So.
You can't go too fast.
Hey, bada, 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 swing. Five E seven. So LU nine, LU one F, CM five E seven.
Sorry.
Right, just reiterating, those were my, oh, yeah. So looks like I concur a lot with Stacy and the local coastal plan.
I guess we list Bayview and LU nine, just generally upzoning in general, talking about that, but that falls in there, so I'm good.
Yeah, I think that covers mine. I, you know, wanted to briefly talk about LU three, which is the economic strategic plan, that I'd like that sooner than later, and I said it was, it looks like it was two years out, but I want it now, but.
It is, it is still included in your budget, so you'll have that hearing on the 12th, but as long as you keep it in, we'll start that work next year.
All right, so we've all, all right. Let's tackle the fire district first. So I'm going to start with Stacy, if you don't, if you'd like to start.
I can, but I feel like you have had more conversations in this than I have. I can just, I can speak a little bit to it. I feel like we're getting, depending on who you talk to, whether it's a board member or a staff member in the fire district, that we, we get different levels of, of concern, and, and I think that that's important. It, you know, the safety of our community is definitely, what's wrong?
Power.
Well, I think we're, we're good.
We're good.
So, we, you know, the, the safety of our community is definitely important, and at the same time, the fire district has the, they also have to work from their end to do the proper modifications that they need to make to be successful and feel, you know, staffed, and then it's up to our community also to support that process. You know, there was recently a measure to raise money, and I believe that we did support that in Arcata, but the whole district didn't support it, and that's why it got voted down. But our community also has to be part of this discussion. It's, we have very limited power on how to help the fire district. We definitely need to partner with them. I know we are partnering with Cal Poly and the, and the fire department on a study. I'm very curious to see what that study says. I think that will give us some great goals to work for. And I, and I know that there's concern about passing this a couple months ahead of getting that and starting those plans, but the general plan can also be amended, and there, we don't have things waiting in the wings to just go up. So I think that, that's the best that I can kind of summarize on my side.
I might be able to add just quickly, in terms of the standard of coverage study that is being completed, I mean, first, the document of your general plan is what will set sort of the build-out design and standards. All of our public safety is going to need to be going through planning process, our police department, EMS, fire, and as we build out this general plan, we'll be building out those services in addition to utilities, transit, transportation, I mean, all of those systems will have to be built out. And they're going to use this plan as the basis to build that support in those planning processes for them. I, I will say, I think the city has made considerable effort to maintain kind of an operational working relationship with the fire district as we should. It's both, you know, both responsibility of both sides, and I think at that staff level and operationally, we communicate and we partner really well. I would also say, I believe the city has really stepped up to support them in this future planning. We provided all the technical assistance in terms of the bidding and the administration of the contract to do the standard of coverage. We will continue to provide that support because certainly public safety in the build-out is important in our community. And, but that study is also going to depend on what this general plan looks like as they finalize the details of that study. So I mean, it can often feel like a cart before the horse, or the horse before the cart, depending, you know, was it the chicken or the egg that comes first? We've had this conversation a lot in the general plan process. Do we wait until we do every sea-level rise study? But we will continue to do sea-level rise studies for the next 50 years in this community, right? So at some point, you have a document that you want to start to that planning. To me, what's most important is that we have historic and we have contemporary four-story buildings throughout this community. We currently today have a seven-story residential structure being constructed, and I believe the other tower is five stories in that development. So it does seem, I don't want to say a little late, but it does feel a little late to say that we, we're all good? Okay? It seems a little challenging to say that we can't support structure fires at four stories or higher than three stories right now. I think our conversations at the staffing level are how do we roll up our sleeves and really do the planning process that you need right now, because these structures are in our community and we need that plan. So I think that planning is going to continue. I think it'll ramp up. I think it's dependent on this plan, and I think that, you know, that conversation has just wiggled in weird ways that I guess I just haven't understood, because I think we will all continue to partner as we have for the last 50 years in coming up with ways to support fire locally here in Arcata.
And I will add that, you know, we are a rural community, and we depend on our other fire departments for mutual aid, right? And so we, we all work together. And, you know, I had conversations with Chief McDonald and Mr. Loudensauger a couple months ago, where I thought that, you know, we had everything like ironed out and we were copacetic, and then I just met with Mr. Loudensauger again on Friday, this, this Friday, and I felt like we had a really good conversation, and, you know, some of the things that, you know, we talked about moving forward was, you know, the need that this plan was going to, you know, be accepted, but continuing to have that conversation, whether it be a subcommittee with, you know, some people from the fire department and some people from the council, or, you know, just continuing the conversation and really like developing that relationship and continuing to talk to each other. And, you know, I know that just adding some additional language that the fire marshal might want to give us to put in the general plan that really has those enhanced measures, like wider stairwells or more exits, fire, like fireproofing, and I know that we're kind of waiting for them to give us the language as to what that would look like. And, yeah.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Aren't, aren't our, isn't our building department currently working with the fire marshal on code?
Yeah, we've had a conversation with the fire marshal and fire chief and the building official, and the three measures were, were kind of common sense measures that came up. I think we want to make sure that that's something that, you know, the board really approves of as, you know, incorporating into the, the plan, and so I think we are in sort of the, the discussion as to, you know, how do we best incorporate those? The council wants to, we can go ahead and add them in. What we had discussed was incorporating those in, you know, in the zoning ordinance, and so if the council wants to move forward with that, we certainly can. They're not currently in there, but that's, that's what's been discussed as reasonable means for addressing some of the concerns about evacuating buildings and, you know, slowing down the, you know, the pace of fire if, if a building does catch on fire.
What were the three things that you mentioned? Because when I see people on Nextdoor or so forth, I tell them that, and they're all worried about fire and how, what's going to happen, I tell them that we're involved in a study that we're paying for, and that we're going to hear, we're going to get a draft at the end of the summer or the beginning of the fall. And from that draft, we can see what the outcomes are and what the suggestions are, and then we can move forward on implementing them or figuring out how to do it. And so that's the way I have been addressing the issue, and I, I'm excited about finding out what the outcome is going to be, because how can we judge the outcome when we don't even know what it is from the consultants? And I feel in some ways that there is worry or concern, and maybe individuals don't understand, as you just mentioned about the study, Karen, that we are in the process of this, and we are not just going along nilly-willy, just making our decisions without taking anything in, into consideration. And I think bringing the three organizations together to actually do a study is really a. a, a good way for us to be going. And it shows that we're all on the same page and that we understand their issues.
Yeah, and I just want to add, like, what I, I really think it, it comes down to, and you were kind of, you know, alluding to this, Meredith, but like, this issue is bigger than the Gateway Plan. It's bigger than the general plan. It's bigger than what Arcata is doing. And, and like Meredith was saying, I, I think, you know, really what needs to happen is, you know, the start of, of collaboration between the city, the Fire District, and Cal Poly is great in working on the standards of coverage and all that. But really, I think it needs to like go beyond that into the, the county level, because the Fire District, you know, also overlaps both the Third and the Fifth County District, right? Steve Madron's District and Mike Wilson's District, as well as the City of Arcata, right? Blue Lake, you know, all the way up to like Nealand and, and, you know, down and around. And so it's really, you know, more, more than Arcata. And I, I really do think that there does need to be, whether it's a subcommittee or a, a group brought together that includes, you know, council members, county supervisors, folks from Cal Poly, staff, Fire Department, right? To really figure out, because I think, you know, what we're going to see when we get this draft of the standards of coverage is that we're already behind. They already can't serve our community. Because that has always been a problem in Humboldt County for police services, for fire services, for medical services. We don't have enough, especially in, in rural areas. And that's why there's so much reliance on these volunteer fire departments and these rural fire stations, because those are the people that are picking up the slack when, you know, we're voting down tax measures to be able to fund our, our services. Not we, Arcata, but looking at you, McKinleyville. But, I mean, really, no, look, I mean, if you look at the voter data, that's what it shows. It's not, you know, I'm, look at it, look at you, right? And so we are constrained, because we are the ones that want to grow, and we want to be able to grow with our Fire Department. But, you know, we can't, because we're tied to funding from other areas of the county that might not see that. And so, you know, Karen enlightened me and gave me a little crash course the other day on just, you know, Humboldt Bay Fire and how that's evolved with taking over Eureka's City Fire Department and that, you know, to being able to pool our resources and work with other, you know, folks in the county is really what we're going to need to do. And I think that like all of us, staff and council included, has really like shown a great effort of good faith. I think all of us have met with Fire Department staff and board members. Karen has come to all of those meetings. David is in conversation with the Fire Marshal and with the Fire Department. Like, we're, we're doing it all the time, and I think we've, we've shown that effort. And I think that actually just shows how stretched thin the Fire Department is, because, you know, we're not seeing much from that except for the, the study going on. And I, like Meredith said, I feel like we were at a good place with that conversation, felt really comfortable, and then all of a sudden, there's a letter that comes out, or there's an article in the outpost, or there's an interview, right? And then it's like, ah, wait, I thought we, we already did that. And so, you know, I think two-prong, you know, seeing that, yeah, we need to obviously pass our general plan, because that's going to create the standard for which the Fire Department can plan for, and that the Fire Marshal has to sign off on every building. And so if we're building something and they say, I, no more, then they can say no more. And that will sit there and not get built, right? And so I think that we need to approach it from a way in which we move forward and we study what we need to study, and we work with the Fire Department hand in hand. But we also, again, like so many issues in Arcata and so many issues in Humboldt County, need to take that bigger view and look at it from, from the county point of view and partner with Humboldt Bay Fire, our county supervisors, Cal Pol-, you know, all these institutions that have a big seat at this table. And so that's where I think we need to, to go with this.
Thank you. Am I ready? Okay. I guess my takeaway was that all is not well with the Arcata Fire Protection District. And as pointed out by Sarah, we've all met with, you know, the Fire District, the Board President, Chief, Justin McDonald. And I just want to read you a letter that we got just a couple of days ago.
We've read it.
But, but the community hasn't necessarily seen it, because it came to just us. And I think it's important that they hear that. So basically, they just said, "The Arcata Fire District understands that there's a public hearing on the general plan 202045, Gateway Area Plan and Form Code, and the final DER will be held on the 29th. We also understand that a vote to approve and adopt these elements is planned." We are, we are writing to request that the approval of these elements be denied at this time and put on hold until the, the standard of coverage for the Arcata Fire Protection District is completed, and that the Arcata City Council and the Board of Directors for our, for the Arcata Fire District achieve consensus on a plan for the likely expansion of the district's capacity. The standard of cover with the city and the district are collaborating on is due to be completed within a few months. The recommendations in the standard of cover should clarify the scope of the required expansions of station staffing, equipment, training necessary for these districts to respond to emergencies with the anticipated growth in Arcata. These recommendations should inform the implementation of the general plan 2045, the Gateway Area Plan and the Gateway Form Code." And that's signed by both the Board President, Eric Loudenslager, and then Justin McDonald, the Fire Chief. So, you know, we were hearing a lot of things from everywhere, and the fact is that they are not comfortable, and they have asked for some protective language, at the very least embedded in that prevents the start of these buildings until we have the ability to protect them. We must address the concerns of Arcata Fire District. And I know that right now, everybody's cringing, because we want to get these things through. And I'm just going to repeat what I heard from them, verbatim. Slow down the approval of the Gateway Area Plan and Form Code. What is the hurry? What is a couple more months? Everything will be ready. The recommendations should clarify the scope of required expansions of the stations and staffing. And these recommendations should inform the Gateway Area Plan and Form Code. You know, it's, you know, people talk about the cart before the horse, and we want to build, but we also want to be on the right side of history. We want to make sure that not only we protect the occupants, but we want to protect those who are firefighters. We want them to come home. So I'm saying that maybe we put in some language to make sure that we have a plan when we move forward and that we do collaborate more with our Fire District. And, you know, we spent $30,000 on this standard, or whatever the amount was, correct me if I'm wrong, close to that, on the standard of coverage. And those who may not be familiar with the standard of coverage, it's really important. It helps, it, it's an analysis of the community fire protection risks, projected growth and land use alternatives within the community. It's an interpretation of the impact of the community growth and development treads on fire protection risks and emergency service planning. So when I hear from our chief and I hear from the Board President, put some protective language or slow it down for a couple of months and let's get that in there, it is a living document. If we need to go back and change it, we can, but we can't change if something bad happens as a result of us moving forward before they're ready to be able to protect those buildings.
But the Fire Marshal still signs off on all buildings. So let's pass a plan and get a plan that works.
Well, I just, I just want to say, like, that, I just, you know, that letter, again, came after I had the same conversation with Eric, and it was fine. So I don't understand why these letters keep coming out of left field after things that we have already discussed. I'm fine with putting in measures for protective sprinklers and how I'm making sure that these, I mean-
But they're required.
Right, exactly.
You have to have sprinklers. You have to meet all these codes.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could, because I think that this is actually going to help. I think it's important for you to understand that passing anything, even going back to some, maybe our previous conversations, everything is being done at the program level. You can't build anything off, off of that. To build something, you have to get to the project level, right? And that's, we're not at the project level. So we're at the macro level. We're kind of like saying what we want, but to actually build something, you have to get down to the project level. And I think that that's the area where you want these protections that are really in, because you want the ability to basically say, if the protections aren't in place and we think that we're going to put human lives at risk, then we're not doing it, right? And before, and you will certainly be at project level by the time that this study is done and, and be figured out. So to just provide a little bit of like, the ability to kind of step back and, and not worry about any action that you would be taking putting human lives in danger. Where at this level, you can't do that, because it doesn't analyze, it doesn't let you build anything. So, so I just wanted to give you that, that when we get to project level, that's probably where you would-
And project level is, takes quite a while. And so if we pass everything, this plan, and then people think about it, if, you have to go through the city process. And by the, if you find a pro- a piece of property and you do all your designing, before the shovel ever hits the dirt, you're out three years, at least three years. And by then, we should know whether or not the Fire District is going to become a district with other Fire Departments like Manila, Samoa, et cetera.
I am fine with moving forward from this topic.
Yeah, and the Fire Marshal signed off on, on Cal Poly's seven-story project. They signed off on Soral Place. They signed off on Plaza Point. And, you know-
Because it met all the, it met all the codes.
If, if they could serve it, then why, you know, are they signing off on these, these projects?
Could I ask a quick question just about what they signed off on? And, and I might be misinformed, but I was told that there was a water pump built within that building because of safety measures. Is that correct? So it's going to be different. I mean, another developer is not going to be able to afford or do that. But they put in particular safety measures, because they have their students in there.
They did build to a very high standard. That being said, what I will say is, if we have a plan and the, and the building structure comports to the city's planning documents and the state fire code, I think the Fire Marshal will always sign off, will feel compelled to always sign off on that. You know, that being said, I think the reality is, we do have these structures that are already in our town, that are being built in our town. So it's just time to roll up our sleeves and do that planning. There are a lot of unique ways that we can meet some of that fire protection. I think the Fire District, honestly, I think they're on board to do that planning. I think that Councilmember Schaefer said it back. They are very, very slim in terms of their resources, but we will continue to provide that extra support to get that planning done. And by the time you are looking at your, your zoning ordinance that, you know, that supports your general plan, I think you will have more answers in front of you from that study.
And I just want to reiterate, I am not interpreting, I read verbatim what the Fire District, both the chief and our Board President said. So this isn't coming from me.
I sat right across from him and had a conversation with him that-
Right.
Was different.
I think we need, we've only, what, eight years? Has it been, we've been working on this general plan, or is it only seven? Whatever, seven, eight years, maybe six. It's a long time, and to have to hold it up any longer, I just don't agree. I think we need to move forward. And within the timeframe, as you say, the zoning, et cetera, et cetera, we will find out what's happening with the Fire Department. We're going to find out what, if we're going to have to create a district, be involved in that and work on that with a bigger district. Maybe we have a district for the whole Humboldt Bay, and it's one Fire Department that covers everyone. And that you just have, like, right now, the Fire, our Fire Department has a downtown station, one out by Mad River Hospital and one in McKinleyville. So it may be that we have a Fire District and they have all these different areas, and that may be what we need to do, is really look big and not look small.
Well, I think when I met with the mayor and, and Eric from the Fire District on Friday, one of the things that really came through to me was, it was just a, a level of frustration in, in general with, and you can pop in if I'm misrepresenting something, with their, with the limitations that they have to raise money and the increasing expectations. And it wa- and it's more of a top-down issue and some reform within the system that really needs to take place. And I feel like conversations like this, if we work together, can help elevate that, because I heard a lot of frustrations, and a lot of the things that were being said in that meeting weren't things that we could control from here. And even, it just, there, there was a lot of frustration that was beyond our capacity here and with, with the way that the system is set up in place, and I think primarily their ability to raise funds for what they need. And I think that's a really, a much larger conversation. And I think what Councilmember Schaefer, I think you spoke very eloquently on what perhaps needs to happen to help that.
They operate on a parcel tax. So if you had subdivisions throughout our community, it would be well, well for them. It would work really well, because they would pick up parcel tax on each one of them. But we don't want to be in our green spaces and out in the bottoms and-
All right.
And creating subdivisions all over. We want to go up and protect that.
Let's take an informal kind of vote, if we want to, if we've talked about this enough and want to move forward. I'm go- I'm good with moving forward.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, David added, the main thing that is the common thread that all of us want to see is to add these building code measures to our zoning ordinance, to make sure that those protections are in code. So when things are built on that project level, like Doug was saying, right? Like, this is the big idea. We can pass this plan and still nothing's going to get built, right? And so we need to have a strong code that's going to make sure that these protections are in place. And I know maybe staff could add some additional information, but that, that is being worked on, right? And, and conversations have, have been going back and forth, so.
I, I've said all that I have to say. I think that this is, and this will be an ongoing discussion issue within the community at large.
And I agree. With that, does that mean we're going, we have some kind of a motion that we want to move forward? Or what are we doing?
We're not making a motion. We're just kind of getting a, kind of a consensus of where we are, so we can move on to the next topic.
And I concur. I think that further conversation, I would like to see that code, and in three months, we'll know more. And as pointed out by our attorney, it is project-based, so. But I just want to reiterate that I was asked to present this, so I did.
By the, by the Fire Department?
By the district.
Okay. So let's move on to, let's just move down to inclusionary zoning. Who wants to start? Free for all.
I'll start. Well, I think, actually, staff should start, because I think it's helpful to understand what we talked, I talked to David about the other day of how it's not in there, but it's going to be, because it's going to have to be an ordinance and all that stuff. So maybe some of that background will help.
Yeah, so I can talk about that a little bit. So the inclusionary zoning would be a chapter that's in our land use code, and it's something that we're working on right now with our attorney. It's the Affordable Housing Requirements Ordinance, and it was repealed back in 2014, right after the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, because that was kind of where that funding came from. So we're reworking that, obviously with the guidance that you provided us and the direction that you provided us with the 15 units. So there's some changes that need to be made to that, and we're working on that right now. But that's why you're not seeing it in here. It's in the, it's going to be in the code. And David might have more to say about that, I don't know.
Well, I think what we've talked about is whether or not there's a way to put in an implementation measure that just addresses that that code is being updated, or that ordinance is being updated. Is that?
Yep, we can do that.
Could I ask a quick question? So that will reflect also that we have concurred at 15 for the trigger? Okay.
So we're good on inclusionary zoning. That was easy. All right. CM5E7, which is?
Trails.
Trails, yes. Oh, yes. Who wants to start?
Um, for, just to clarify, when I met with some community members regarding that, and one of the concerns was that if, they were concerned with the way that it was reading, that if, if a developer felt like the, you know, project should take precedent and a trail should be moved, that it would just take the developer and zoning administrat- administrator to move that trail. And so I did check on that and found out that that's not the case. It would be a Planning Commission or Council decision. That's not a, a zoning administrat- administrator call on that. And I, I feel like in our community, trails are, they're a big deal to, to everyone, depending on, it's interesting, because when a trail is scheduled to go in, we get really interesting pushback about how it will be ruining the town or the neighborhood, and then the trail goes in and it's beloved. So, you know, it's just interesting to watch that process. But I think that the, the L Street Trail is a hot topic, because that has been being talked about. If we were, my thing is, all of our trails should be treated equally. If we were going to- If we were going to talk about a trail in any other part of town, we would, I assume, have those residents in here very upset that we were talking about moving a trail or changing it. And so I think that it's important that there is a process. If we need to, for whatever reason, consider moving a trail, then it should be a process. And it's my understanding that it would be a process. And I just want to clarify that and, you know, make sure that I'm getting it correct.
Yeah, just in short, you are correct. All of the policies in the general plan are really the roadmap for the city council to make decisions. I can understand why, the way that it's currently worded, it would seem as though this would be a decision that a developer was making. But this is in fact a decision that only can be made by the city council when it comes to moving trails. You would be authorizing that through, you know, a decision to award a contract, for example, to move the trail. Or if a, you know, if a project came through that requested a trail be moved, that could only be done through city council action. And so here's one simple resolution is to change the highlighted section from "In limited circumstances, city shall retain", just change it to "In limited circumstances, city council may", may allow a trail to be moved. And then there was a little bit of discussion. City manager maybe may come back to the points that she had made earlier. And I know that there were some other discussions from public members about breaking this up into a couple of different, you know, policies. So certainly, I think all of those ideas are on the table.
So we're talking about trails in general, or are we just talking about L Street?
No, this policy refers to all trails.
Are we popcorn-ing now, or should we go and, oh, okay. I guess, you know, it is true that our community has a deep love for trails. And I think that's why there is the concern, is that somehow, some way, when we built this particular gateway area plan, it was going to be walkable, it was going to have all these wonderful things, that there's a fear that that trail could move. And I'm just wondering, I think we should protect all Class 1 trails personally. But is there any reason why we couldn't put in a specific language for this particular trail?
So we need to talk generally and not about specific trails? Or one particular, specific trail?
So we already, I think, covered that specific trail.
Right, yeah, recusal stuff, right.
And I think there was a conversation around this last time. The council actually gave direction to change the policy to where it reads right now. In general, retain and expand the current total linear feet of Class 1 trails within the city, including the L Street segment of the Bay Trail North, Annie Mary Trail. And so we did specifically call that section out as like no net loss for this trail. And certainly, if you wanted to say.
I think we can get rid of the "in general" and just start with "retain and expand". I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And then "In limited circumstances, the city council may".
Okay. And this will take a little bit more finessing here because the language needs to be cleaned up. But yeah, if you want to clarify that this is a city council decision before a trail gets moved, you can do that here.
I'm confused because I tried to discuss this when we were not in, we were in recusal. And I was told I had to wait till now. And now I'm telling, no, I can't because it's too specific. So now I feel like I lost my opportunity.
No, no, no. You asked for that to be included in the gateway, and you had three twinkles on that, so.
Yeah, we already codified.
You codified it in the last.
The twinkle was because I had to tinkle and I was just trying to get to the ladies room. So can I recant that? Because I think it's really important to me, anyway.
No, no, you, it's agreed to go in. You're good.
But now we're talking about this specific general plan policy, which does include semi-specific language about L Street. But like Stacy was saying, you know, to treat all of our trails equally in how we engage with those communities that those trails go through. And that's what this general plan policy is about. But we did say that we wanted to put that specific language in GA 6X or whatever it was.
All right, so are we good with the amended language? Can we move on? Fabulous. All right, Stacy, local coastal plan. That was yours. Do you want to?
I was just looking for a brief update because I think, yeah, just, I mean, I know our current one is very outdated and we've been working on it. And I believe the last general plan was passed with it still being outdated, correct? And so this is not unusual. It happened the last time. It's happening this time and we're working on it. So just if you could maybe give us an update.
Yeah, quick update is that the, you are correct, the general plan 2020 was adopted when the local coastal program was, at that point, about 11 years old. It was adopted in 1989. And that is still the current version. We tried to amend it one time before and weren't successful. But I have a good feeling about our opportunities, our chances of coming to agreement with the Coastal Commission on the current local coastal program update. We've received a couple of grants from the Coastal Commission to do the work of updating. We've been in close contact and communication with the local coastal staff during that whole process. At this point, my sort of rose-colored glasses vision of when this will be adopted is early in 2025. We have a draft version of the local coastal element. That's the general plan element of the local coastal program that is available currently and has been for quite some time, actually, since 2022, for public review. A lot of that policy was built by a different council, obviously. But we're, you know, we'll bring that back as a separate agenda item and talk in more depth about it. There are portions of the coastal zone, obviously, that overlap with, you know, with the city general plan policy. And what we've done is we've segregated that out, made the decision to separate the coastal policy completely from the general plan policy. Our last go at this, we tried to combine them, and it went really horribly. And it didn't make sense. And so we're separating it out and going back to the strategy that we had in the 1989 local coastal element. So you can adopt these changes to the general plan. They won't affect the local coastal program necessarily. When you adopt your coastal policies, your sea level rise policies, all of the land use policies, that's when, you know, when you'll do that in the local coastal program. There's kind of a mirror image of the areas that are in the coastal zone with the general plan. We think of the general plan as a citywide document, but then the local coastal program is sort of a overlay on just the areas that are in the coastal zone. And if I could, just real quick, to address the comments about increasing development in the coastal zone that Councilmember White brought up earlier. The current version of the local coastal program actually does not allow for densification in areas that are subject to sea level rise. It does allow for change of land use. And the idea behind that change of land use is to incentivize cleaning up the areas along South G Street, for example, that are currently, you know, industrial. Some of them are scrap yards, junkyards. And have no, there's no motivation under the current zoning to incentivize cleaning those up. And so the local coastal program does have some zoning changes, but those zoning changes are really geared towards early incentives to put us on the path towards longer-term adaptation and retreat from that area. I hope that answers your question.
Are you good with that?
I guess then that's a good segue then into the coastal zoning, because that was, and Samoa, so that was yours, Kimberly, up there, yeah.
So, yeah, I concur. I think it's a really good idea to clean up these most likely very toxic sites. And we wouldn't be able to put residential there because that's not our game plan. I think it'd be great for like, maybe, see, I don't even know if I want to put RVs there, or those kinds of things. Because yes, they can move and retreat. But there's humans on contaminated land still. So I guess it would be to the extent of how well we could clean it up and what we would be putting there in place of it. We obviously want that cleaned up so it doesn't go into our waterways when the sea level rise does happen. So I guess your explanation did appease me.
And I just want to add to that, too, is that these projects will be required to clean up the sites, characterize and clean them up to standards. If you look in a document that I'm not going to talk about, I'm just going to skip over that whole thing. Never mind.
So I'm looking forward to our local coastal plan update because it has been coming. And I'm anxious and I'm happy to hear that we'll be looking at that in 2025.
All right, fantastic. Can we scroll down? Because I think we're into historic preservation. Who was that? Stacy?
Well, I just had a question because we've had, it seems like there's been some concern brought up regarding demolishing a historic site, house, building, and putting up an apartment building. And maybe words are just being used wrong. Maybe people are just thinking older buildings. But the word historic keeps coming up. And it's, I just want to be really clear that we do value our historic buildings, and we won't be demolishing buildings that are historic for anything. Can I just get clarification on that?
Yeah, that's correct. The historic preservation element has prohibition on demolition until, you know, if someone were to propose a demolition, they'd have to do an EIR to evaluate it. The council would have to approve that demolition and the EIR, certify the EIR that it was worth demolishing. And then there would be a prohibition of demolishing it for six months after that approval to allow time to try and find someone who would take, you know, and move that structure instead of demolishing it. So all of those preservation policies are still in there. And I think Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Stillman has something to say on this topic, too.
Well, one of the things is that it was brought up, it's on Nextdoor. And one of the items that the Planning Commission talked about at one time is looking at our different neighborhoods, Bayview, et cetera, and thinking about intensifying uses there. And so that is why you saw the picture that I showed you earlier, Stacy, of a historic house with an apartment complex next to it. Because Lisa Brown posted that on Nextdoor. But back in, when Rollin Richmond was president of Cal Poly, which was from 2006 to 2014, there was a program that they were, and maybe some of you remember this. There was a program to take Bayside and to purchase the houses there and to remove them and to build housing for faculty, staff, et cetera. And that fell away and it didn't happen. So my feeling is that we would have seen a demolition in that area. If that moved, had moved forward, there would be virtually, a lot of the housing would no longer be there. But it was stopped. And so my feeling is that in this Bayview neighborhood, we're not going to see that happening unless we had a massive fire and we had to rebuild up there. And then you could see there might be, well, I'm just bringing it up, fire department, fires, historic buildings, no sprinklers in them, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, let's move on.
This was my.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Well, it was my thing I put up, so I'm hoping before we close that talking point.
The historic building was hers?
Yeah, I couldn't, yeah.
I thought it was hers. But anyway, that's.
No, it was, I concur.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's the issue. And so I don't see that happening anymore with Cal Poly. They aren't interested, dropped away. I just thought I'd give you some history of what had happened at one time. And there's that concern about the Planning Commission bringing forward, looking at more intense development in these areas. And that's why Lisa Brown posted that picture, which I can show all of you if you want to. I sent it to the Community Development Director and to the City Manager today so they could see it because I felt like it would be brought up.
But I know, I know Councilmember White wants to speak. I just wanted to simply compliment you, Alex, on your ability to remember specifics and dates. It is absolutely humbling. So it's pretty impressive.
Well, it was quite a dire situation, I could say. And it had, the neighborhood was really concerned. And the president, Rollin Richmond, at that time, was visiting people's homes and looking at them and thinking about, this would be a good site to tear down and whatever. And so it had the neighborhood in uproar, I would say. And so it went away as a project. And other things happened instead.
So, and I will defer to you because you are the expert with historical designations. But I, my understanding, and this is what I'm hearing, and so you can correct me, is that we have a rather low number of historically designated buildings. But we have a whole bunch of really nice Victorians and Craftman Homes that just haven't been designated. And so they have no protection. They can indeed be torn down. If you are, you know, I mean, the price is right. An owner can very quite well, easily sell it. And then we can have a, you know, a high-rise put in there. And I think that's some of the concern. And also to say that when we are doing the LU 9, we're looking at not just Bayview or, well, I guess I'm jumping into the next one, so I'll wait.
Wait, wait. So what you're bringing up is that, I mean, we only have 96 designated historic structures in Arcata. We have, as the years pass, every 50 years, you get new historic structures. And so we, the city and the push in the very beginning, in the 80s and the late 70s and 80s, we did a whole program on historic preservation for Arcata. And at that time, people were so excited that their houses were listed, they came forward immediately and designated them. Now, it's a much more complicated process to go through for designation. And it's much more time-consuming and more expensive. So we had an open time, let's say we just said, we have two months. And if you want to be designated in the two months, you come and get yourself designated. We would have a lot of designations.
So let me ask you this, just to clarify, maybe you answered that and I'm just not, it's not, you know. You say there's, what, 96?
Yes.
But we have a whole lot more of all.
Well, I know, I just explained that.
Let me ask the question. What is the number of older buildings that would qualify as a historic structure but that are not currently designated? Those are the homes that I'm concerned about being torn down.
Well, they're also in, if they're in a conservation area, everything in the conservation area creates the conservation area.
But that Sunset and all those neighborhoods are conservation areas. And we are talking about taking those from residential low to residential medium and high.
Can I suggest that we, that we talk about this when we get to LU 9? Because I think that's where it fits in. Is that all right? Because I understand that, okay. All right. Billboards? Alex, is that in the general plan?
It was in the general plan, but it was just a sentence about billboards.
Okay.
I don't know where it is, so I can't find it. So I read it, but I can't find it again.
All right.
So Arcata has a long history of, anyway, from my point of view, maybe no one else's but mine, of not really wanting to have our scenic highways, which is 101 and so forth, obstructed with billboards. At one time, we tried to see if we could create a scenic highway between Arcata and Eureka. But we weren't able to because of the number of billboards that were there. So there is, there's communities, like the county, is working towards eliminating billboards. And so I think we should try to have a little bit more in our information about billboards, if we could just do that. That we can think about that billboards are not only a blight within the city's Arcata jurisdiction, but they have surrounding county areas that are impacted, too. And they fall within the view sheds. So I was hoping that we could say a little bit more. And there are numerous existing, they're in agricultural areas. And once a billboard gets taken, falls down or whatever, it's able to be put back up, even though we don't want that to happen. But it's happened repeatedly over here by Samoa Boulevard or the on-ramp. And when we've lost them, they've come back.
I just want my "Welcome to Arcata" sign, or rock, or whatever.
Is it on a billboard?
No, not on a billboard. Just a beautiful "Welcome to Arcata" sign. Do you want to say something about billboards?
Just real quick, the policy in the general plan is not very strong. I was forwarded these by Supervisor Wilson. These are the policies that they're considering taking in the county. He modified them slightly to make them a little bit more Arcata. I think these policies are, you know, consistent with the vision that we have, and you could easily incorporate these. We already have a zoning ordinance that does. could easily incorporate these. We already have a zoning ordinance that does designate billboards as, you know, non-conforming. And there's a process for removing them between, and that can be strengthened as well, you know. Mike has, has suggested that the county's ordinance is, is stronger. Haven't had a chance to look at those in depth or compare them, but, you know, certainly if the council is interested, we could incorporate these into the general plan.
I concur. I like that. Thank you for bringing that to the table.
I think it's a good idea because we've seen how many times they get rebuilt when they fall down. And so-
Okay, well, then that was an excellent topic, Alex. Thanks for bringing it up. Let's, let's do this LU9 and get it over with. I mean, let's talk about it.
So, we could, we could take Bayview neighborhood out because we actually just talked about it from the point of view of, well, anyway, I talked about it. Maybe Kimberly has more.
Who wants to go first?
We'll put it on there.
I think Kimberly did, okay.
Yeah, I guess I am concerned about these little neighborhoods that are already being impacted, you know, like I Street, you know, tucked in there in the Sunset District. And then of course, Arcata Heights, North Town Bay. I, it's just, at what point, I mean, it's too much. We, we need to get rid of LU9, in my humble opinion. I don't live there. It doesn't affect me. But I, I, if I was somebody who owned a home there and I put my entire life savings in there, and then all of a sudden, I'm going to be surrounded possibly by commercial mixed use. And it, it just does not fit with the neighborhood. Like with the Gateway area plan, we worked really hard on that because it, it was feasible. But I don't see that these particular neighborhoods are going to do well with going from residential low to medium or even high density. In particular, we already have, what is it, 29 units per acre. So that we already are increasing housing opportunities with the ADUs. And, and of course, we have the nearby Cal Poly Humboldt taking care of housing for the students. So I don't feel that it's necessary. In fact, I think it would be a detriment. And, and I did take into account what Lisa Brown had said, that because, you know, not all of these 98, not all of these historical homes are, have a historical designation. And the highest bidder will win. And it's going to definitely, and I know everybody hates that word, character of the neighborhood, but that's why so many of us live here, because of the character of Arcata and its neighborhoods.
Well, I just think that the residents in the Gateway are concerned about their character as well, so.
Because we have his, we, when they, well, I can't talk about it, but that place somewhere, there was a study done on all the historic structures within that area. And I think there were 60 that were designated. And, and that is somewhere in the plan and that they're considered significant. Not all of them are listed within the, being a historic structure within the 96, but a few of them are. And so I'm, I'm thinking we have that data for that area, wherever it is.
So it is a living document. Why don't we wait and see what happens in the, the word that I'm not allowed to say?
That's right. Don't say it.
So, okay, so, let's talk about this. Because right now, it says like year two, right? And then the language is city shall consider rezone. So that all seems very, very nebulous to me. And I feel like, you know, we did do a huge process of engagement around Gateway. And so, you know, it does give me pause to, you know, all of a sudden, you know, have this overlay zone. So let's talk about like the, the timeline and what kind of, what, what the process looks like.
Yeah. So I think there may be a little bit of confusion around what this implementation measure actually does. This measure does not change the zoning anywhere. It doesn't commit to change the zoning anywhere. It doesn't describe what the zoning change would be anywhere. All it says is, let's think about this. Let's investigate this. Let's look into doing this. Originally, the planning commission was looking at a policy that would change those zoning designations. And the planning commission was a little leery about making that big of a jump without having the kind of public engagement that we've had around some of the other planning work that we've done. And so what they settled on was, instead of making it policy and making it happen now, let's put it in an implementation measure and evaluate it, investigate it. So when I read this policy, what I, or this implementation measure, what I see is an entire new planning process where there'd be new public engagement in each neighborhood where this was considered, where the planning commission would take public comment, make a recommendation, the city council would ultimately weigh in and say, yes, we want to do this, or no, we don't want to do that. Having said that, if this council is like, we absolutely don't want to do this. We want to take this off the table right here and now. All you have to do is eliminate this. Or if you want to eliminate certain neighborhoods and say, except these neighborhoods, you can do that too. So there's a lot of flexibility in where you go from here. But this, this implementation measure does not enact any of this. Nothing can be built based on this implementation measure.
So when it says Sunset Neighborhoods, that doesn't preclude, for instance, Murphy's Market property, or would it?
I think Murphy's is down on the Westwood.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, Westwood is also another one of our older neighborhoods.
Yeah.
As Sunnybury. We have quite a few. It's just that they haven't been designated as neighborhood conservation areas.
And this, just for a little bit more context, you know, some jurisdictions, some states, Oregon has eliminated residential low density zoning altogether. Berkeley has eliminated residential low density zoning. And so it's kind of, there's a move in this direction. The state of California has an outright ban residential low density zoning. But with the, with the accessory dwelling unit policy or laws that are in the books, not just policies, but the laws are in the books, this number 29 units per acre has been thrown around. On average, every residential low density zoning district can accommodate 29 units per acre based on current state law. 29 units per acre is, you know, pretty high density. And so we could go in and redesignate and increase the density of residential zoning districts, low, low residential zoning districts. But they're already pretty high based on state law. So I don't know what the effect of this implementation measure actually would be.
So let's just get rid of it.
Sarah hasn't weighed in yet.
I 100% support this policy, actually. And just to add to that, I mean, again, this language is very nebulous, right? Shall consider. We can even push it to year three or five if we want to, right? To see, I would support that. I would support pushing it from year two, further down the line, so we can see how Gateway is being developed. But I would just add that, I mean, especially Bayview a bit in the sense of it's close to Cal Poly, but North Town, Arcata Heights and Sunset, like especially, are these kind of neighborhoods that like, this idea of infill development is like based around because they are close to services. It's right next to the university. There's Arcata High, Arcata Elementary, the new open door clinic. There's trails, there's parks. It's like literally everything that anybody would want to live next to. And like a public commenter said before, like, that's exclusionary. It's that, you know, you have to be able to afford a $450,000, actually, that's probably pretty low at this point, $550,000 house to be able to like be in that area. And so there's all, you know, there are underutilized lots. There are vacant lots in those neighborhoods. There are dilapidated, single level multifamily units, you know, that could be redeveloped in something that is really positive for those neighborhoods. Commercial with residential, like people in America freak out about that because we are like based in this world of like 50's sprawl suburbs that you have to get in your car and drive to everything. But like, European design is like, walk out of your house. There's a coffee shop downstairs and I'm going to pop over to the butcher that's next door in the bake. Like, that is true community. And like, that is what like good neighborhoods look like. And I think this like aversion and fear of commercial mixed use is really, it's not, it's not the thing. And I know like we're a little American brainwashed with it, but like, it's, it's not, at least for me. I don't know. I mean, other people in the community might feel differently, but that's not the way like I want to live. And that's what I love living, about living downtown, is that I can walk to pretty much everything that I want to do. And like, that is something that I so value about like living in Arcata and being able to do that. And if you're sprawling out and you have to go live way the heck in Pine Hill, King Salmon, McKinleyville, right? You, you lose out on that. And so that is why I support LU9.
So, as long as we do our due diligence, do outreach and have this go through a process and maybe wait until year two or three to see how things are popping in the Gateway.
Or not.
Or not, right? Or not. So-
I, I agree that we should pop it out. So let's just make it out to three years or four years and change that. And then we won't have that immediate fear, which we had with the letter we got from Lisa Brown with, on Nextdoor, you know, getting everyone really nervous. If we put it out and the planning commission can talk about it in three or four years from now, if then, and then we can see what's happening.
I am good with that. I just want to say that Lisa Brown wasn't the only-
She's the one that did it.
Well, she's not the only one. I mean, Glenn Colwell just brought it up too. And there's several other people that have brought it up.
Okay.
So I've said what I needed to say. I don't think we need to double down. I do, if we're going to move forward, like to move it out a little bit to year four or five so that we can, you know, lessons learned for the Gateway, for the, yeah, sorry.
Let's shoot for year four and it's probably going to be year five, knowing how slow things move.
Yeah, nothing's moving fast.
Yeah, I'm fine with year four as in doing outreach, but not striking it entirely.
So, so because we have this historic preservation, and then we have this fact that we know how complicated it is to be going through the process to become a historic structure. You, you have to have someone do your evaluation. You have to fill it out. You have to go to the Historic Landmarks Committee. Then you go to the Planning Commission. Then you come to the council. You pay all these fees. So if, if we're really interested in having more structures come within, becoming designated, then maybe we want to look at within the next year, a timeframe that people could do whatever research they can themselves, et cetera. And we allow this timeframe for people to come in and list their structures.
Okay.
And we don't have to, and we could loop them all in, or you don't have to individually go through this expensive process. And that's why we only have 96.
I am going to take, do a quick time check, all right? It's 10 after 9. We've got several more to go through.
Can I propose something, Mary? Because we're continuing this to June 5th, right? So is there anything on that list that you are really, really wanting to talk about?
Oh, right, because I'm not going to be here.
And if not, maybe we could just continue the rest of these to June 5th.
That is a fabulous idea.
And then move on to our final, yeah, item.
But I just wanted to just say one more thing regarding that because I think it's important. No, it's just, I, I, you know, I think you did a great job of expressing like what your preference was. And I think that there's one thing that got left out of that that's important to bring up, that I think you'll agree with. And I'm not doubting you. I'm not, I'm not like saying no to your preference. I just want to acknowledge that there, there, there are people that prefer the, that prefer the sprawl and that prefer the more rural and the separated neighborhoods. And I just want to acknowledge that there's nothing, those are people's preferences and what their choices. And so that's also valid. But what's driving, what's driving the push for moving away from the sprawl and for upzoning, we just need to keep coming back to this. It's not just about preferences. It's about climate change. And that, we have to keep bringing that back because we do have to be willing to make sacrifices for the greater good of existing on the planet. And I think we get caught up in what we as individuals prefer and want. And not that that's not important, but if, we do have to think of climate change. And so I just want to make sure we bring it back to that.
Thank you, Stacy.
So, you know, I just want to, if we want to deal with loud cars, we can get it, get it off the, right away off the agenda.
No, let's, um, so, yeah, so we can continue the rest of this to June 5th. I'm fine with everything else. The only thing that I wanted to make sure gets captured was the economic strategic plan sooner than later. I don't, there it is. All right, cheers. So I think-
Can, I just want to say yes. Abs, I, I feel like that's like, I know we're rushing, but you're not going to be here on the 5th. And I think that the economic development plan is very important. And so I don't want it to be quick and glossed over. I just want to say yes. Like, we do need to really work with our business community and like kind of look at, you know, possibly, the county is currently working with a company on developing a strategic plan. And they're, they'll be doing a lot of work. And maybe we could, you know, use that information, work with a similar company, just hire, you know, some type of expertise, gather business community members, really engage folks to work on an economic plan. I, I support that.
I totally agree with that. It's, it's pretty, we've gotten to a point where we can't let it go any longer.
Yeah. Okay. So, you're good?
Can I just get, one quick check? Okay, so on LU3, change to year one. So, yes?
Year now.
Change to year now. Okay, year now.
Year zero.
Okay.
Three years.
Whatever that means.
And then I got, there was a little bit of conversation, but didn't close on change timing for LU90 or four?
Yes.
We're all good with that?
Yes. Okay.
And then, and then just one last one, the historic preservation, the idea was floated to create an open forum for people to come in and get listed.
Does staff have the bandwidth to, to do that?
We have to figure-
Not in year one.
Yeah. So that's fine. So let's put it in like year-
Three.
Three.
Because it's going to take people to understand that it's a possibility. And then they're going to have to want to start doing their research, either up at the university or wherever, to start documenting their, the details on their house, et cetera. And it, well, CR doesn't have that class anymore, but it'd be something where you could actually have a class and you, maybe we could get a class on that. And people that are interested, they would understand how to do that detailing and how to fill out that DR form. And which is one of the things that's required.
All right. Thank you.
He's written three to five. Are you okay with that?
Three to five. Okay, so.
Thank you. I think that was, I think that was really productive. Good on us. I am now going to continue the public hearing to, for the, to June 5th.
To June 5th.
To June 5th.
Any objections to that?
Any objection to continuing this to June 5th?
Okay.
All right. Is everybody okay to keep moving? All right, because I've got a bet to win, but I don't think we're going to make it. All right. Doug lost a long time ago. All right, new business. Consider authorizing an application to the Competitive Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program for funding for an affordable housing project at 1622 Old Arcata Road. All right. And as promised, we're going to start this item with public comments specific to this item. If you are interested in providing public comment in person, then on Zoom. Okay.
I don't ask much. I can find it. Well, hello, Chris Richards. We'll keep this moving, I guess, huh?
Hold on, Chris, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Sorry, we're stopping.
Okay, tell me.
That's my address.
I'm looking for my notes. So, Chris Richards on the topic for the Danco loan application. The only thing I had to say about that was, were the only few things, is, you know, the city generously offered them that funding to evaluate that property. And we haven't seen any, the committee hasn't seen any studies or references to studies or they, in the agenda packet, they are, the city's claiming, they're claiming that they have evaluated it and feel it's a viable site for, that it's worthy of applying to get this money from the state. But I think the transparency there with what's going on with this process isn't great because of the lack of information that Danco's provided on this. And I realize there's a timeline with this for the application deadline, but maybe this isn't the greatest time for them to try to move forward. I think there needs to be more information out for the public. I remember the hearing, there was quite a lot of people from that neighborhood that came and talked about how, you know, much degradation's on that from when all the old cars were up there- much degradation's on that from when all the old cars were up there and everything. But, you know, everybody has the issue of that type of housing near a school, which I don't understand some of their arguments on both sides of that argument. I would say, if anything, try to get more information before we decide on, you know, trying to get them this funding. Maybe the funding could go to somebody else that's doing something somewhere that's valuable too. So anyway, that's all I have on that. Sorry for pounding on the microphone.
Yes, good evening, I'm Fred Wise. Just a few comments. This grant was announced on March 6th. I've been coming to the council meetings for about close to two and a half years. And I've seen this happen again and again and again, that a grant comes to you for your approval, for your consent at the last minute. At this time, according to the staff report, you can either reject it or accept it. You do not have time for any back and forth on this proposal. You know what I'm talking about, I believe, that this has become all too common. I propose that the council makes some kind of declaration to the community that these grant proposals have to come in at least three weeks before their deadline so that you can adequately address them. In terms of the $180,000 loan, it would be nice to see something from Danco on that, at least some kind of a progress report as to how they're using the money and what the results are. I'm of the opinion this is the wrong place to put a large building. And I'm sure I'm not the only one. They may have some online commenters speak to this also. There's a question about whether the grant funding that they're getting can be applied to a different site. I fully support what Danco is doing with affordable housing in Arcata. I would like to see the quality of the construction be higher and be more equal to what we see Danco was able to build in other communities. But that said, I'd like to know whether the, whether the, if they apply for this grant and if they receive the funds, can they use those funds at another site? I'm sure you're going to approve this because it's good for Arcata. But the process, I think you understand, of waiting to the last minute for these grant proposals, which has happened at least three or four times in the last two years, is improper, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would agree with a lot what Fred had to say, but I also would say it's kind of vague as far as even the project. What are we talking about in scale? Over three stories in that location? And, and I'll state it again. Arcata Fire said nothing over three stories because it's already out of hand from the standpoint of some of her other buildings. So that would be a very important parameter to find out right now in a general sense is, are they going over that? I'd also point out with Danco, you had a pretty extensive project with them that was called The Creekside, which I counted, you had 12 meetings with them, six from the city council, six from the planning commission. The city invested in a website. And it was basically a done deal, the project for senior housing. And also Danco had a website with it. So what happened from the standpoint of, I mean, they basically took some very inexpensive ag land and the city helped them out to bring it in to the city and made it worth quite a bit of money. And then they just flipped it to the university. So if I look at that, it's, it's pure greed what they did. And we didn't get housing out of that. So I, it seems like you actually in some ways, you know, rewarded that behavior from the standpoint. There was no punishment for that. And I'd also bring up the point that just recently with Cal Poly, I went to check out what was happening with that purchase of the land because they were pretty vague. And that land is not going to housing. It's going to go to sporting complex and parking. So, you know, I, if you're going to be giving low interest grants to the large companies, I think they need to be a little bit more details that they're not going to do something else, that they're actually going to do what your goals for building housing are. Because, I mean, I just can't believe that no one from the city complained about that. I brought that up. I don't think, it was so long ago Kimberly wasn't on the council at that time. But, you know, I just was like shocked. Nobody was like screaming that you did what? And so we need to take a look at that. I'd also point out, I think, I don't know if it's a Danco project in Eureka, that's the one with the Japanese restaurant that's on East Street, two blocks from the, from the bay. But I saw recently what their, the rents are for that. And for a one bedroom, it's 1650. So we need to like take a look at, you know, since this was supposed to be a mixed use project, it might be the first one, I think David said at the time. How much are these rents are going to be? Because I don't know if people think affordability at 1650 for a one bedroom, but I think that's another element to look into.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online?
We do. Our first online caller is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Brown. I just wanted to say that one more time tonight. The staff report indicates that Danco has performed an environmental analysis of the site. And yet there is no mention of the financial feasibility for the necessary cleanup of this brownfield site. I think we have a right to know this information. The conditions on site are a concern for neighbors. And while these concerns have been known by the owner for many years, very little cleanup efforts have been conducted. Sandblasting of the lead-based painted Quonset hut by Danco actually contributed to the problems there. Contaminants have apparently leached off-site as suggested by the results of lead testing done for the Old Arcata Road project, which shows lead contamination at confirmed hazardous waste levels near Jacobi Creek School within the project area. These soils, and I mean the project area of Old Arcata Road, these soils are going to be disturbed during the construction of the road improvements and will need to be handled and treated as hazardous waste during this city project. Do note that the city only tested for lead contamination, not the plethora of toxins known to exist on site. I would like to think that the council would want to hear about the results of their assessment prior to applying for funding for moving forward on this site. Would want to hear about the plans for cleanup and remediation of the site and whether or not it is even feasible in the construct of this proposed development project. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have call-in user, call-in user number four. Go ahead.
New city attorney.
Yep, we can hear you. Call-in user four, ask, go ahead. Can you unmute?
Hello, hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Can you?
We can.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, you can, okay, good. This is Nancy Pelletier. I was, I'm very interested in what Lisa Brown had to say. I mainly had questions about this approval. And according to the staff report, I would like to quote it. I said, "The loan will not have direct impacts on the environment because the nature of the project is unknown at this time. It is speculative to suggest that there may be indirect impacts on the environment. Therefore, this action qualifies for the common sense exemption because it can be seen with certainty that that, that the action will not have an impact on the environment. Any actions taken as a result of the loan would be evaluated for compliance with CEQA, CECA. This action is exempt pursuant to CECA Guideline Section 15061B3." And I just, according to this, am I missing something? It seems to me that the conclusion is reached through the supposition stated in the beginning of the statement. The nature of the project is unknown at this time. Anyway, I, my question, main question is, did Danco ever give a report of the results of the feasibility study to the city council? If not, the staff's recommendation that I've just read makes no sense to me. What was the study based on? Was the feasibility study based on could the site be cleaned up of toxicity in the soil? Or based on whether Danco could complete the project? If I, if it was based on the old toxicity in the soil, it could be cleaned up, we need to know the results. There is very little, there is very near to the site a surrounding neighborhood and the Jacobi Creek School that could be severely impacted by blowing toxic dust during cleanup. And I concur with Lisa Brown's objection. And that's all I had to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
All right, another call-in user, number seven. Go ahead. Go ahead, users, call-in user.
Good evening, this is Kathleen Stanton again. I think 53 units of the former Rogers Garage is just much too dense to develop for this suburban neighborhood. This property is surrounded by one-story, single-family houses. So I think you should, you know, think about a project that's maybe half this size, like 25 units and limited to two stories. And one that provides parking for every unit. At present during the day, parking on Highland and the Old Arcata Road are completely filled due to the school and the popularity of the cafe. So we desperately need sufficient onsite parking if this development went through. And this is not a CECA exempt project. I am very concerned about the remed, that the remediation occur as the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Board has required for you that the first foot of soil in the entire bath behind the Quonset hut be removed. And if the development goes deeper than one foot, that the soil be tested at deeper depth to see if it also needs to be removed and stored offsite. This is a very heavily contaminated site. And earlier I heard one of the council members talk about, I quote, "We wouldn't put humans on contaminated land and you wouldn't even consider an RV park for such a property. We must plan for what we need, not for the greatest density in this neighborhood and for the greatest income for the developer. We need parking here and serious, very serious remediation." Thank you.
Thank you.
No other online comments.
All right, can we get a staff report, please?
Yeah, just a couple of highlights. And then I also want to note that Chris Darr and Mackenzie with Danco are on Zoom so they can address the project elements if you have questions about that. The couple of things I want to say about this is that, you know, we, we do have a deadline of the 6th of next month. Your next opportunity to adopt this would be on the 5th. And we wanted to make sure that you had at least some time to be able to review it. The decision to go after these funds was made this month. And it was in part due to changes in the assessment around the competitiveness of this project for, for these particular funds. I think that, you know, in an ideal world, we would be giving more time. But with the way that the subsidy layering works for these projects, you kind of have to take advantage of the opportunities when they come. A project like this is likely, and again, Chris and Mackenzie can speak to this, but a project like this is likely to have multiple different funding sources, each of which has different timelines and each of which wants to be not the first one in. And so when you have an opportunity to, you know, take advantage of a grant opportunity that can help establish some of that subsidy layering early on, it's, you know, it's opportunity, you take that opportunity. With this, what we're asking for the authorization to do is to apply it to the maximum amount. We still need to go through and do the, the financials to figure out what exactly the, you know, the different funding sources would be. But this gives us the opportunity to apply for the total amount. And those funds wouldn't be committed until all of the subsidy was in place, until all of the, the funding sources were in place. And so this grant doesn't in fact authorize the development. It doesn't, you know, approve the development. It doesn't push us over, you know, a line of no return. But what it does do is it gives us the opportunity to be poised for making that decision, which we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. There will likely be a secondary phase of this to come back and look at what, you know, a loan agreement would look like. Oftentimes when they're doing the subsidy layering, in particular if you're going after tax credit, which this project likely will. Having a soft loan from the city advantages the project for those kinds of additional funds. And so we don't have the loan terms in this. Because of the timeline, we wanted to make sure that we got authorization to do the grant and will come back for what that full subsidy package looks like at a later date. I'll leave it to the Danco team to talk a little bit about the environmental work that has been done with the original loan that we've made to them and to describe some of the, you know, the results, if they, if they have them, that they can talk about and what the other elements that they're using those loan funds for. I know there was a request to hear a report on that. And so I'll let them speak to that. But I do just want to address that this project will not be built unless it can be cleaned up to residential environmental standards. So the environmental analysis, Phase 2, will evaluate the contamination on site, develop a cleanup plan. The water board will evaluate that cleanup plan. And the site will be cleaned up. If not for this project, that site will remain contaminated indefinitely. So I guess if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But that's, that's really all I have prepared. We don't anticipate you, it will adopt this resolution night. We'll save that for the 5th. Did want to note that there are a couple of changes on the resolution. Resolution number, the person signing, Mayor Matthews, will be absent that day. And sadly, our, no shade to our new city clerk, but our old city clerk's name is still on this. So we'll be changing that to our new city clerk's name.
I, thank you. I think you, you did clear up several things, I think, for the benefit of the public on that. And I appreciate that. I just want to acknowledge that the concerns that folks have are valid concerns of contamination and of CEQA and all of that. But I think it's, there's confusion in the process and that's what's happening. Nobody's saying that the project itself is exempt from CEQA. That, that is ludicrous. This is a loan, so the loan sure is. And I think that's a really important thing to distinguish. This is not authorizing the project. And you, you did say it very clearly that the site would have to be cleaned up. And so I, I think I would, I would love to hear from the folks from Danco just for that update because I think that's really what the community is wanting and asking. And so if they're able to, to give us some type of an update on that process, that would be great. Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening. Chris Darr, President of Danco Communities, joined with my colleague, Mackenzie Dibble, who will be the project manager of this project. We're happy to be here discussing another good project with you all on the site formerly known as Rogers Garage. As mentioned, the project is in the early states of development. We understand that there's a land use process that needs to take place. And so we're well aware of that. But we do, we do have a good start to the project. We've made some progress that's worth mentioning. As mentioned, we did engage a consultant to do an environmental assessment based on Phase 1, which required a Phase 2. And we just received the results of those studies last week. We were analyzing those as late as this afternoon with our consultant to make sure we fully understood because we knew that this would come up tonight. understood, because we knew that this would come up tonight. So the results of those studies are that the site, I think everybody knows, it used to be, have an underground storage tank, there was a case open with the water board that was closed, I think back to 2005, if I recall, is when the case was closed with the water board. And then there's another case around the metals on-site, which do exist. The consultants went out and tested for contaminants, and there are no contaminants on-site, except for the metals do still remain, and there are no contaminants that are above the residential uses that are currently there today, above Regional Water Quality Control Board standards. So the issue remaining is the metals, heavy metals, which is lead. We do have an approved work plan that has been submitted, or was a work plan submitted to the regional board to remove the lead from site during construction, which would be our intention, although there could, as we understand it, regional board's current protocol is that they encourage to leave lead contaminants on-site and cap those. So we will be working closely with the regional board to update the removal plan or the mitigation plan to their current standards and make sure that it's up to residential use. I think it's worth noting that, you know, we would never build a project on top of a site that didn't allow residential use. Not only would we not do that, but we have lenders and investors, you know, very, people that watch this, very close state agencies, that, you know, that's just not an allowable thing. That's not, that's not a thing that we would, that we would ever do or even be allowed to do, not just from local level, from, from your oversight, but from many other oversights, from the funding, the state agencies that fund projects like this. So you can rest assured that it will be cleared, cleaned up to residential standards. In addition to that, we've attained, we've retained a local architect, McSorley Architecture, who has been helping us program the site. We have come up with a few different designs, but the latest one that we've landed on would be a 51-unit project. Our current plan does have 1.5 parking spaces programmed per unit, and it would be a range of stories, but it would be smaller stories in the back half of the property where the slope is and taller in the front. We haven't settled on a height, but it would be no more than four, likely three and two-story construction. We intend to have a mixed-income project here, meaning a range of incomes for very low and low and moderate. We would see this as a mixed generational project, which would include families, seniors, and individuals. We will, we will do what we always do, we will incorporate sustainability in our design, including building materials, indoor air quality, energy efficiency, alternative transportation, and social programs. Currently, we've scripted 10 one-bedrooms, 22 two-bedrooms, and 19 three-bedrooms, all which would, again, go through the, through the city's process for design review and whatever environmental analysis that would be required through CEQA. Yeah, this action tonight, or sounds like next, next week, would allow us to apply to the state, allow the city to apply to the state, city being the applicant, Danco being the sponsor. That would be one source of many financing sources needed to bring the project financing package to life. There would be, as mentioned, this, this fund would be a soft fund, and then there would be tax credits and potentially other grants, applications through the state agencies. If, you know, this, there's plenty of time to work on and evolve the design. Soonest we would even be able to apply for tax credits would be first quarter, mid-first quarter, or end of first quarter 2025. So, you know, there's time between now and then to really get the design and entitlements and full disclosure of the project. The project, we think the site selection is appropriate for the proposed project. I've heard some comments about, you know, being next to a school. In fact, the state encourages, we get points for being next to a school. They want to see families living close to schools so they can walk and utilize the schools that are close by, and so that's, that's a very important part of the project, including parks and other amenities like grocery stores and transportation. The site is, it is an infill site as opposed to urban sprawl, so from our perspective, that is a smart, smart development, and the site was previously contaminated and still contains lead contamination, which we intend to clean up, which, as David mentioned, likely would not happen if there wasn't a project and funding available to do that. And I think that concludes my comments, so Mackenzie and I will be here if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris. That was really informative. Thank you. Do you have any, I mean, this is, we're approving a loan.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Couple of questions. I want, so Chris said that they received the environmental cultural analysis report a couple days ago. It's not in our packet, is there any way that that could be made available to the public? And, like, I guess because the pre-development award was paid by public monies, and a couple constituents did reach out, thinking that, you know, they would like to see that. It's mixed income, affordable housing at 60% of the median income wage, and that same constituent was concerned about the affordable housing at the Sorrel place because somehow they became exempt and were able to raise their rent substantially because of these exemptions, so they asked if I could clarify what that would look like. I'm happy to hear that it is going to be a mixed income, and, and that it is near a school is great. I used to live right across the street from the school, it was quite nice. Yeah, I think that's all I have. Oh, and we're going to be, the soft loan, how much would that be? This, this particular loan, we can apply up to, was it 5 million of the 12.5 million?
Yeah, I'd like to bring the loan details back at a separate time, if that's okay. We haven't really discussed it and thought about it, but generally, it would be for the full amount of whatever the, you know, whatever the project was. But I haven't had this conversation yet, and we haven't gotten through that point in the, in the, in the process.
So you're looking for us to approve without that information?
This is just to apply, yeah. You'd have a subsequent approval of the loan terms.
Okay, thank you.
And then in terms of seeing the report, oftentimes cultural resources reports are confidential and not disclosable to the public, and the Phase Two report, you know, I'll let Chris talk to where they're at in that process. I know that they have a draft, I don't know if they have a final yet.
So the environmental portion of the report, we can see, correct?
Yes, when we get to the point of approving, you know, subsequent stage in this process, we'll have environmental analysis, and it, it could be that that environmental analysis supports an exemption, an infill exemption, and it's possible that it does not. It's possible that we're looking at a mitigated negative declaration, but all of that will come at a later stage. Prior to approval.
Chris, did you have something to add?
Well, I was just going to say that the Phase Two report is, is a draft report now, but we can make it final. I don't see any issue having it reviewed, but we can send it over. And then in terms of, the other question was around, I'm not, I wasn't clear what the question was about the other project at Sorrel. Everyone there income qualifies at 60 and below. I think people change incomes, maybe there was a recertification, and that was the issue, but there's nobody there that's over income of 60%.
And I don't know if you remember the conversation, David, but you're the one who said that there was some exemption that was able to, that's why they were able to raise the rent substantially.
This doesn't have anything, I'm sorry.
Anything to do with this, but it's. I was asked to bring that information and ask those questions, so I'm doing what I was sent off to do.
Well, I'm glad you have a lot of people telling you how to move, but I would like to authorize an application to the Competitive Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program for funding for an affordable housing project at 1622 Old Arcata Road.
I'll second.
We, we will, okay, never mind.
No, but thank you for bringing that up. All stuff that I'm sure we'll talk about down the road. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Dates of future meetings. We have a, confirming that on June 12, 2024, we have a special city council meeting at 6 o'clock PM in the council chamber to discuss and adopt the fiscal year 2425 budget. Are we all okay with that? Is that in our calendar? Fantastic. Well, everybody, have a great meeting on the 5th. I look forward to watching it. Go Krabs, go! We're adjourned.